Welcome to the July 10, 2012 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Menucha.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Weaver.
Please join with me and our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, a nation from its own invisible liberty and justice.
Mr. Stevens standing for the invocation. The 18th century Irish statesman Edmund Burke said that "all government, indeed, every human benefit and enjoyment, every virtue and every prudent act is founded on compromise and barter." Tonight, we pray for guidance and wisdom for our city's leaders as we gather to deliberate the issues that are before us. We pray that their work is done in the spirit of cooperation and compromise and in concert with the best of our virtues and principles. We pray for so as not to forget the brave men and women in our armed forces who marked our nation's Independence Day last week away from our nation's shores, serving when called upon and taking up arms when asked. Keep them safe and return them home. We continue to pray for peace and harmony for all mankind this evening and always. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
Agenda for the July 10, 2012 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 3, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of July 17, 2012.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority and the Glendale Successor Agency, we don't have any business agenda items for July 17. We do have a Glendale City Council and the Successor Agency, a joint meeting in the afternoon to commence at 3:00 P. M. Director of Community Development, this is regarding amendments to the downtown specific plan and titles 5 and 30 of the GMC concerning the Civic Center, Broadway Center, Maryland, and Alex Theater districts. We also have Director of Community Development, this is initiation of amendments to Title 30, zoning and other titles of the GMC related to policy changes, updates, and corrections. That evening for the council meeting to commence at 6:00 P. M. for July 17, we have a number of consent items, interim general manager of Glendale Water and Power, quit claim of utility easement that is no longer required by the City of Glendale, interim general manager of Glendale Water and Power, funding for Chromium 6 research studies, Director of Public Works, maintenance of city-owned Elgin Street Sweepers and Vector Catch Basin Cleaners. We have adoption of ordinances, ordinance establishing the Ross Moyn historic district overlay zone. We have three items under action, Director of Human -- we have actually two items, Director of Human Resources Memorandum of Understanding Between the City and Glendale Firefighters Association, Director of Community Development, initiation of a zoning code amendment for view protection related to new construction on hillside zones. And lastly, we have a hearing, Director of Public Works, conditional vacation of the first public alley east of Glendale Avenue and south of Mission Road, and this is vacation case number 150V. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next is a presentation of a donation check to Glendale Clean and Beautiful from the Glendale Association of Realtors.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, respectable City Manager and Staff. My name is Armin Avadian. I am here on behalf of the Board of Directors and the 1,500 members of the Glendale Association of Realtors. I would like to compliment the present and past members of the City Council who have had the vision to create and support the Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale. Through the efforts of resident volunteers and city staff personnel spearheaded by Sam Engels, Glendale has become a model for numerous cities throughout the United States, having earned regional as well as national awards and recognition for neighborhood beautifications. In these days of budget cuts, we hope that you will continue to support this essential committee, which betters our city, beautifies our neighborhoods, and maintains our reputation and property values. To support the continuation of this wonderful program, to acknowledge its importance and the benefits to our city, which our city receives from it, the Glendale Association of Realtors would like to donate the sum of $2,500 to Pauline, who is the current volunteer chairperson, and Joan, who's the incoming chairperson. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
On behalf of Glendale Clean and Beautiful, I would like to thank the Glendale Association of Realtors for their generous donation. Thank you, Armin. The association has supported our community beautification and quality of life programs for many years. These funds will be used for our annual Great American Cleanup, which draws hundreds of volunteers to help pick up litter and beautify our beautiful city. It will also be used for our "I Love My Neighborhood" poster contest, which teaches elementary school students about the importance of civic pride and taking ownership of one's community. And finally, it will help fund our Gem Property Maintenance Awards Program, which recognizes homes with outstanding curbside appeal because we believe that the quality of our neighborhoods depends in large part on an individual's pride of ownership. Thank you again for your ongoing support of our programs, and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you, Armin.
Next, 3C is presentation from Fire Chief Scoggins on the 2012 brush fire season.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Harold Scoggins, Fire Chief. I come before you tonight to give you a brief update on what's expected for the 2012 upcoming fire season here in our region and throughout the state. As you've been hearing on the news and on the radio all throughout the day, we're expecting a number of challenges this year. And on June 18, we got together what's called Region 1 and Region 6, and that's multiple counties throughout Southern California that makes up those two regions, and we discussed the challenges that are ahead of us this fire season. We talked about what's coming with the weather predictions, the resources, the deployments of those resources, and then the challenges that can be before us if other fires break out. The things that we're looking at, what are the challenges? The rainfall. As you may already know, we've already received about eight inches of rain this year. That's half of what's normally expected. And the temperatures have been hotter on a daily basis. To this point, we've already seen twice as many red flag days this year when the winds kick up and the temperatures and the single-digit humidities are out and about than we seen last year at this point in time. The amount of acres burned in our region is already doubled in size from where it was last year. So these are some significant challenges that are ahead of us this fire season. As you look at what's been happening all across the nation, specifically in Colorado, where we have one person from -- well, actually, he's in Wyoming now. He just got demobilized today, Captain Tom Marchant. A lot of big fires are breaking out. He started off in Colorado at the end of June, and then he got redeployed to another fire in Wyoming, and he's going to be heading home now. But this is becoming a common theme because of the weather, because of the single-digit humidities, and different things like that. The resources are also creating another challenges. With all the budget challenges that many agencies have been facing, obviously, there are less firefighters on the street today than there were a few years ago, all the way from CAL FIRE to the U.S. Forest Service, to our local partners, whether they're Los Angeles City Fire Department, or even here in Area C. And what does that mean for us? If you can remember, a couple of years ago, when we had the station fire, and we had a lot of resources really come to our region to help us out with that station fire, to help protect the assets in Glendale. Well, we may not have that type of response if those fires break out this year. There aren't as many firefighters on the street. Well, what does this mean for our local community? We're asking the local community to help us out and to become better prepared, to prepare your homes, to prepare your families of what's coming. And there's a term out there called ready, set, go. And ready simply means it be ready. Do your brush clearance, make sure your family has a plan, make sure you know where you're going, and pay attention to the surrounding conditions. And then set simply means that when a fire breaks out here locally in Glendale or any of the surrounding cities, start putting your plan that you got ready into play. If it starts getting close to us, we want you to pack your valuables in your vehicles, contact your family members, start letting them know what's going on in case you have to leave. And then go simply means that if we ask you to leave, we really need you to leave. Many fatalities that occur in fires today are because people don't leave, and it becomes pretty challenging in our hillsides to get our vehicles up there, to do the work that we need to do if we have to pull firefighters off of structure protection to start looking for people when we have already asked them to evacuate. So here in Glendale, we can help ourselves. We can be ready. We can get set, and we can go when it's time to put our plans in action because it's, like I said, we're already feeling the temperature increase. July 8 was the start of it. They told us this on June 18, and some of you may remember how hot it was on July 8. We're already experiencing those single-digit humidities, and we have less resources to battle the problems that we did a few years ago. So just to create a scenario for you, if several large fires break out in our region as they did in 2008, when the weather systems came through, when the dry lightning strikes really lit up Central California, it would create a lot of challenges for us. So we're asking the community to help because help may not be coming from other places as quick. So we're asking you to do the brush clearances around your homes, lim up those trees, cut the dead trees out, and you can go to our website, glendalefire.com.org or .net, and you can go to our fire prevention page, and it has all of our brush clearance guidelines on there. But we're really asking the community to help us out this fire season, and periodically over the next several months, I'll be coming back to you as a reminder. But right now, it's the calm season, even though the temperatures are hot and we're in single-digit humidities. But as we get closer to fall and the Santa Ana winds start to roll in, that creates additional challenges for us. So we're asking the community to help us out and be ready, be set, and then go when we ask you to go. Are there any questions?
Chief, I have a comment. Yeah, as I drive the hillside areas, I see numerous properties that are overgrown and perhaps haven't cut back their brush for a couple of seasons. What does the fire department do in terms of sighting individuals? How does that procedure work?
Since May 1, the fire department has been doing what we call vegetation management inspections in the area of our city called the High Fire Hazard Severity Zones. And you can imagine those are the hillside areas or the areas that are adjacent to the hillsides. We have been sighting certain residences, certain vacant lots, and different things like that. We generally give you time to find a vendor to do the brush clearance. But if you choose to do it yourself, please go to our website to make sure that you have the proper guidelines. But over the next month, we're really going to push hard to make sure the areas in the community that we do our inspections on are cleared up. By August 1 is going to be our goal date to have the work done because August is expected to be a hot month, and as we roll into September and October, we know we're going to have challenges when the Santa Ana winds come in. You know, comments have been made that if the fires get so big as they did many years ago, we may be waiting for the rain to come in and put it out. And I can remember when I was at the Cedar Fire in San Diego, over 250,000 acres, where a firefighter lost his life on that fire, the fire didn't go out until the rains came. We don't want to have that problem here in Glendale so we can help ourselves as a community.
And the citations are fines essentially. Is that correct?
The citations can turn into fines if you do not do the abatement in the allotted amount of time that we give you. And if you don't by a certain date, we will hire the outside contractor and come in and abate the hazards with the vendors that we have. But we really try to work with the community to find a vendor that they can work with, and hopefully on a regular basis.
That's where the Glendale Youth Alliance comes in and put in a plug for the young people that go out there under supervision, and it's a program that's incorporated in the city, and they do a wonderful job. They generally charge less than private vendors do, and of course, the youth are employed and very enthusiastic about what they do.
And if I could probably put in another plug for GYA, tomorrow is their annual luncheon, where they actually raise funds to put the youth here in the community to work. The luncheon is at Anush Banquet Hall on Glen Oaks, and every dollar raised at the luncheon will go to put a youth to work. Every $1,000 puts one youth to work for the entire summer. So if you can, support the GYA, support the kids in the community, and the kids on the brush team really work hard. I've been out there with them on a couple of days, and they really work hard.
So have I. So have I.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief.
Next, please.
Next is City Council or Staff comments.
Ms. Friedman.
Well, I wanted to talk about two people tonight, and I knew that one of them was going to be here, and it turns out that both of them are here, so I'm very happy. And I hope that you'll forgive me for reading a press release, which is something I don't think I've ever done before during announcements, but I wanted to be sure to get everything right. Here I go. Last week, Glendale received several awards and recognition in the field of urban planning from the Los Angeles chapter of the American Planning Association, and I want to congratulate our Community Development Director Hassan Higani and his team because they are responsible for this slew of awards. The North Glendale Community Plan, which a lot of people in the community also worked on, was honored in the category of comprehensive plans for large jurisdictions, and a component part was also called out, the North Glendale Historic Context in the Focused Issue Planning category. You'll see why I wanted to read all of this. In addition, the new comprehensive design guidelines adopted by council at the same time as the North Glendale Plan won an award for Planning Excellence Award for Best Practice. The Maryland Arts and Entertainment District received a Neighborhood Planning Award. Last, but definitely not least, two Glendale individuals were honored. Community Development Director Hassan Higani was named the first recipient of a brand-new award they gave, the John Chase Visionary Award for Critical Thinking, Creativity, and Mentoring. And it's great to know that we have a recognized visionary running our planning department. Stephanie Langrekin, who's here, one who is the current Chair of the Planning Commission and a past member of the Design Review Board and the Historic Preservation Commission, and also a Fellow of the American Society of Landscape Architects, was awarded the Citizen Planner of the Year for contributions to the field from a nonprofessional. So out of everybody in California, she won that award. So these awards are certainly shared with economic development, neighborhood services, and the city attorney's office, and reflect well on our community as a whole. There are many citizen volunteers who make contributions to the North Glendale Plan and Historic Context, and our boards and commissions, of course, who are all volunteers, gave direction and defined the work. Moreover, they reflect the leadership of the City Council in -- well, I don't want to talk about us. This is a press release. You want me to keep going on that one?
Yes. I think you should.
It talks about us as visionaries and being supportive, but I'm not going to talk about that. I really wanted to commend Hassan and Stephanie for these awards and Hassan's whole team for making this possible. Congratulations. Congratulations, Stephanie.
Yes. Saturday, I attended the Concerned Off-Roads Bicycle Association's Mountain Bike Skills Clinic, which was -- which happens every first Saturday of every month at Malibu State Park, Malibu Creek State Park. I'm still in one piece. I made it through. But it's interesting what you learn by attending that clinic, and I did that because I want to kind of participate in Glendale's volunteer mountain bike patrol unit. But the interesting thing was that it takes much more than just riding a bike, because I rode bikes all my life, you know, on the streets and all of that. But I didn't realize that it takes skill, practice, and a lot of practice to get good and be safe on the trail. So anyone who's interested in mountain biking, I highly recommend that you take this course. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's pictures to prove it that I was there.
Well, so we had an Academy Awards, and I wasn't invited. I would have been on the red carpet to see our two awardees, and it is a high honor, and it reflects on Mr. Higani and my person who was my next-door neighbor many years ago. I knew she had all this talent. I spent all this time doing my landscape there at the front of my house, and everybody liked it. Then she moved in next door, and all of a sudden, my great design was nothing compared to Stephanie's. But anyway, it's a high honor. It reflects on both of them, their professionalism, and also on the staff that Mr. Higani has put together. He certainly has picked some wonderful people to work in the department, has streamlined it, and we're very proud of both of the awardees. I want to talk about a couple of meetings, the League of Cities meeting that I attended. The focus was basically on the having to do with redevelopment, the Steinberg Bill, and then the Paris Bill, Speaker's Bill. But in my estimation, I just don't see any concrete plans or anything that the governor is going to sign. So I think the best bet for the league is in September to try and trade some support and maybe trade that for support for the November ballot initiative that the governor is pushing. We also talked about economic opportunities and economic development, et cetera. Then at the SCAG meeting, it was certainly an eye-opener. We got a report from Southern California Edison and the ISO, the ISO being a sort of organization for all of the electrical providers, utility providers in the state. And because of the problems that Southern Cal Edison has with their nuclear plant at Santa Nofree, which is offline, looks like it's going to be a very difficult summer in terms of not being able to use that energy. And the ISO's report was somewhat bleak in terms of the possibility of rolling blackouts throughout the state. So we'll see where that heads. Glendale obviously has enough power that it generates and facilities that are owned by Glendale Water and Power, but we all are part of the ISO.
Any comments from the staff? Okay, next, please.
Next is the consent items. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motioning member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration. They do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
Hey, I have a --
The only item.
Right. I've got a request to pull 5A.
No. Mr. Weaver. Okay, and a second.
Second.
Sorry? Is there a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Weaver.
Okay.
It's the only item.
Yeah.
I thought we passed the --
Was there a card to pull? If there is a card to pull, I'll read it into the record.
Yeah, okay.
5A is interim general manager of GWP regarding requests from property owners at 1975 Verdugo Boulevard in the City of La Cañada Irrigation District for GWP to provide them water and fire line service. A1 is resolution authorizing GWP to provide the water and fire line service and authorizing execution of all necessary documents.
Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. As I was looking at this particular agenda item, it crossed my mind to see if perhaps these property owners understand the changes that the City of Glendale plans with regard to the fire line charges. Most people and most businessmen today, especially all the ones that I talked to, are unaware that the fire line costs, this is the emergency water line that is used in case of a fire, is increasing not by 200%, not by 300%, not by 500%, but 1,000%. A fire line that is eight inches, 10 inches, that right now they pay $75 a month for is going up to nearly $750 a month. And I think that it behooves the city to be very clear with the business community and any apartment owners with buildings of 25 units or more, anyone that has a fire line, that they should be aware that these costs, as approved by the City Council for regard to the additional fees, are increasing almost 1,000%. And I was just wondering if the property owners in here understand what those charges might be should they choose to use Glendale Water and Power to service them. Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Well, you have it.
I think Mr. Ochoa wanted to comment.
Well, a motion and a second to pass.
I'll make a motion, but I have some comments.
Okay. Your second, he'll make the motion. Mr. Najarian and then Mr. Ochoa.
Just so the folks out there know, not only do these people at this particular property know the rates and the charges, but they have taken extensive efforts to divest themselves from the La Cañada Irrigation District to be able to tie into the Glendale Water and Power system. I don't know. I think this is just, you know, an opportunity for Mr. Milano to try and put forth his agenda on what is otherwise a very routine item. Is he suggesting we vote against these property owners who wish to tie in? I'm not sure. Clearly, he doesn't seem to support the item, but I won't deny these folks their desire and their intention to hook into Glendale Water for a safe, secure, potable supply of water as well as fire line service. So, sorry, Mr. Milano, I won't follow your advice on that.
On a consent item?
No, it's a consent. I can only tell you that in looking at what the cost would be to connect to, as Mr. Najarian indicated, to the La Cañada system, it is much more cost-effective. They are petitioning us to allow them to join our system. So this grows our base, which is important because one thing that was referenced is that in the rate restructure that was approved earlier this year, yes, we did increase fire line charges, but we did decrease the commodity charges, and so what you see is an equalizing effect for water users of a moderate volume. And so it does sound sensational to talk about what the fire lines increase has been, but really only because we hadn't increased those rates to what the capacity and the demand really is on the system. We did drop and moderate the commodity charges by using multiple tiers. And so folks, especially on the commercial and retail side, particularly if they're petitioning Glendale to join our system, undertake both the due diligence and the moral hazard to understand what it is that they are getting themselves into, but still, we are remaining competitive with competitors in this arena. So it's actually a good deal for Glendale and for the petitioner.
Roll call.
It was moved by Councilmember Weaver and seconded by Najarian. Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Menucha.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communication, and this is a section reserved for three-minute community event announcements. We will have the full five-minute portion at the conclusion of all city business.
Leon Meyer.
Good evening, Mr. Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Meyer. I'm here on behalf of the Friends at a Library, and the Friends at a Library, together with Abriel Books over on Broadway, are putting on a book by Eris Genigian called This Angelic Land. Now, somewhere around the end of 1991, a drunk, irresponsible, black driver was driving the police crazy on the freeway, and they finally got him off the freeway, and they stopped him, and they arrested him, and they beat him to an inch of his life. And someone caught that on 29/30 seconds of film. And the result of that, plus a racist white police chief in Los Angeles, and a prejudiced jury in the Simi Valley, and the acquittal of this 12 -- by 12 people, I think it was an all-white jury, resulted in the 1992 Los Angeles Rodney King riots. These riots were the most destructive riots in the United States' history yet, and yet to date, no novel has delved into the subject matter head-on. And now, in This Angelic Land, critically acclaimed author Eris Genigian tells the story of Adam Verderian, a hip 27-year-old bar owner during his six-day journey through the surreal heart of the riot in Los Angeles and one of the city's darkest -- and during one of the city's darkest episodes. We are fortunate to be the first library and the first city to see and have, hear from the author of this book. And I don't know what else to say except that this is a heads-up. I've talked about it before. Thursday, June 12 -- Thursday, June 12th, at the library, 7:00. Eris Janigian is a well-known author. He has written a couple of books already that were acclaimed, and he has received an award. The one award that I think is quite special is that he was a finalist for the William Seroyan Fiction Prize and the recipient of an award from Columbia University where he went to school. So that's the event for this Thursday. Come early and meet Eris Janigian and let him give you his impression of the life after the Rodney King riots. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any other cards or presentations.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a really quick announcement in the spirit of some of the presentations or announcements that the mayor has made, I just want to announce that on July 25th, Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Glendale Central Library, there will be a lecture and book signing that's being organized by Aubreyal Bookstore, as well as the cultural Armenian Cultural Programs Director at the library. It's Towards Gold Gotham Memoirs of a Survival by Hago Parsenian, and it'll be presented by Dr. Arda Arsenean Ekmekci. Dr. Ekmekci is the dean of arts and sciences at Haikazian University in Lebanon, and this is of particular importance to me, as I mentioned last week, because it happens to be the memoirs of my great-grandfather. Robert Fisk, the noted journalist and Mideast correspondent, referred to this book in one of his articles, and he said that one of the telling things about this, or one of the unique aspects of this article, or this book, this memoir that was published, is that the Arsenean family was fairly upper-middle class, and they were forced by the Turkish government to buy first-class train tickets to the death marches, and then subsequently were extorted by gendarmes and other atrocities along the way. So the book signing will take place on July 25th, Wednesday, and it's open to the public, and it's a free event. Thank you.
And what's the location again?
At the Glendale Central Library.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Mr. Kasaki.
Next on the agenda is seven, adoption of ordinances. 7A is an ordinance amending Chapter 5.84 of the Glendale Niss Pro 1995 relating to taxi cabs and other vehicles for hire. This was offered on July 3rd, 2012, by Councilmember Weaver.
Move 7A.
Okay, second.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. There was just one change as it relates to the applicability of this ordinance. It'll apply to any application received before July 31st that hadn't been acted upon. So the streamlined process will apply to any projects that come, or any permits, excuse me, that are submitted prior to July 31st, which is the effective date of this ordinance.
Do I have to change the motion?
No.
Just to note.
And the ordinance was changed, but you moved the ordinance, so it will be, and it's in the ordinance.
All right, we had a second. Roll call.
Which ordinance is this for? Hold on a second.
Other than taxi cabs, any emergency vehicles.
Councilmembers...
I'm going to reboot it so I don't have access to the agendas yet, but it's, I'm working on it. No, it's a, today I have a PC, it's not the Mac. It's taking me longer.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
On your action items, 8A is director of public works continued from June 19, 2012, regarding Honolulu Avenue Road Diet Test Case Progress Report and Michigan State University Road Diet Research Report, January 2012, at 81 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, we have a number of cards. However, I clearly stated at the last meeting where this was discussed that there wouldn't be any more input from the public. We had approximately 35 speakers, and so tonight, the city council will deliberate. The two members who, and discuss, the two members who weren't here, who missed the meeting, have had an opportunity to review the DVD of the meetings, and of course, we've continued to receive emails from different constituents and constituent groups. So tonight, it'll be deliberations and discussions. Why don't we have the traffic engineer, our traffic engineer, come and sort of give us a synopsis and give the public a synopsis of what has taken place and where we are?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what I thought I'd do is, the last presentation, we discussed the, essentially, the pros and cons of the road diet on Honolulu, which was from Orange Dale to Ramsdale. We had a lot of discussions, public input, throughout the outreach meetings that we had, and the concerns were expressed in terms of if we take away the capacity of the roadway by reducing the lanes from four to two, there's going to be delay on Honolulu. There will be some issues with loading and loading of passengers at different locations along Honolulu. The concerns about why this was not, we didn't go through an outreach before we selected Honolulu, and there are a lot of emails and comments that were sent to the staff, which we presented in the staff report. On the other hand, also, there was a lot of comments about that this is only a test case, we're trying to promote bicycling, make it safer, safer street, as Honolulu could be reduced from four lanes to two lanes. It will reduce the distance pedestrians have to cross, bicycles will be more comfortable riding in a striped area rather than mixed flow with vehicular traffic. And there was a lot of comments from the bicyclists that were in support of such a test case, and if it doesn't work, we can always go back to the original cross-section of Honolulu. The cost of this was about $125,000. We've already bid the project, we do have the funds for it. The funds are Transportation Development Act funds that can only be used for this purpose and no other uses. And we have the money, the design has been done, we can go ahead and do this in sometime in July. And we've done the before analysis in terms of travel time delay analysis, traffic counts, counts of the bicyclists that are currently using Honolulu. So that project, as was originally discussed at the city council, can go forward, the council wishes to do that. However, the concerns that have been expressed as to whether or not that should be an option, or should we look at other options? What I did, I just have a, just for presentation purposes for council, we had a number of road diet options that were included in the bikeway transportation plan that will be coming to you for final adoption in end of July. These are the candidate road diet sections, obviously Honolulu, a section of Pennsylvania, and then Honolulu continuing to La Cercanta, and then beyond to Orange Dale. This is the section that we approximately discussed from Orange Dale to La Cercanta and beyond to Ramsdale, where the road diet option, $120,000 project can be implemented. Originally, when we first came to council, there was La Cercanta as another option for a road diet, somewhat similar characteristics, the volume is about 13,000 average daily traffic, and that was another option. Another option that we had presented to council was Verdugo Road, this section of Verdugo Road from Honolulu down to La Cercanta. It's a six-lane cross-section, three lanes in each direction, we have a raised median. That one, simply, we can go from six lanes to a four-lane cross-section. Again, I have all the cross-sections here if you want to go into the details. And by just removing one lane line, we can actually put in a bike lane, a wider parking lane, and a much wider bike lane, that compared to all the other facilities that we have installed in the city, probably be a better cross-section than any other one because we do have the width.
Which ones are the Verdugo?
This is from Verdugo, basically Verdugo Road from Honolulu to the north end to where the Honolulu, La Cercanta and Verdugo merge at this point. Ocean View basically comes in at this location approximately. So that cross-section can be done for approximately $50,000 because we're not slurry ceiling, we're not doing anything. We can just, by removing a lane line, restriping, putting the bike lane, that's something that we wanted to, you know, highlight for you to look at. The other options were more in the downtown area. One was Orange Street from Doran down to Broadway. We have different cross-sections of that. Again, that's an option for putting in bike lanes by taking away the center to a left turn lane, we can do that. That was, again, I have cross-sections for that. Idea was, since Brand has become a street that a lot of bicyclists would like to use, and we have the angled parking on Brand, potentially, this could be peril in Brand and traffic, bicyclists can use this section of Orange. Again, there's some new development that are happening, so that could be another concern. However, it's a candidate. Another cross-section from, which is Glen Oaks from Louise, to basically where Eto'o, Glen Oaks turns into Eto'o at this location. This is the highest-volume section of Glen Oaks in this area, it's about 17,000 cars a day, but that has four-lane cross-section. There are a lot of driveways on both sides, there are commercial businesses. This one, we looked at as also as an option, go from a four-lane to a two-lane with bike lanes and a center to a left turn lane. That option also, one of our concerns, one of the concerns has always come to us from the Mountain Rossmoor Homeowners Association, that traffic is shortcutting coming from Glen Oaks, continuing on Glen Oaks, and goes up Eto'o. We've put in a lot of humps and bumps throughout, in that neighborhood. So potentially, if this has gone to a two-lane cross-section, it can calm down the traffic and shift the traffic down to Monterey, which we already signalized all the four-way stops along Monterey, trying to divert that traffic onto Monterey. So that's another cross-section. I have all the details about the characteristics of each one of these, if council wishes to go through the details. I also have the cross-sections for all these different segments that I mentioned. So before I go into that detail, I'd be happy, I mean, my presentation is concluded, but I have all the details if you have any specific questions on these road diet options.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bagdanyan. Questions or comments?
We're doing the one on Honolulu, praying was about.
Right, what we're talking about, bike paths and before, Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Bagdanyan, we had a conversation about a week or 10 days ago, and I relayed the fact that I had held a meeting with the head of the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, seeking his thoughts and what the City of LA does with regard to bike lanes. And they're very much progressive, as you know, they've got the Ciclavia, and they've got a commitment to bike lanes throughout the city of Los Angeles. And I explained to him, I pulled out my diagram, my cross-section of Honolulu, and I expressed some of the concerns that we've heard both on the dais and from the community with regard to the potential restriction of traffic flow. And his, well, there you go. To some degree, you've gone and adopted that discussion point where they, the suggestion was currently, we've got a 12-foot lane, and then a theoretical 12-foot lane, and then an eight-foot parking lane. The suggestion that Mr. De La Vega made was that we, in fact, cut down the 12-foot lanes to 10 or even nine feet, which would, and cut a, as indicated, cut the parking from eight to seven, which would both preserve two through lanes of traffic for vehicles, although narrower. However, you've told us many times before that a narrower lane has the effect of slowing traffic. So we would presumably have a slower traffic, but the same side-by-side vehicle flow that many of the residents are requesting we preserve, along with the benefit of a five-foot bicycle lane. How does that concept, what is your opinion on that concept and that configuration?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Najarian, as you see here, we did look at that prior to, and then you mentioned to me, we went and diagrammed it, in the, on Honolulu, between Locker Center and Orange Dale, that concept technically can work. In other words, going from reducing the 12-foot lanes to 10-foot lanes, reducing, creating a five-foot bike lane, and then going from the eight-foot parking lanes to a seven-foot parking lane. Basically, we're going to all the minimums, you know, minimum five-foot bike lane, minimum seven-foot parking lane, and a minimum travel lane. That would work. But when you go beyond, from Locker Center to the west, since we already have a two-way left turn lane, we will need additional three feet to implement this on that cross-section. Then, in that case, if we were to use the same mirror image of that down here, our parking lanes go down to five and a half feet. We don't have enough width to implement it in that section because we already have a two-way left turn lane. So that's the issue. We can do it between Locker Center to Orange Lane, it's approximately 2,700 linear feet. There's a little bit less because we have to do some transitioning from a four-lane to a two-lane at the intersections in some areas with the right turn lane and some of the offsets. But this is doable for about 2,700 feet, only from Locker Center to Orange Dale. Beyond that, we, unless we go and remove the two-way left turn lane, which is being used by the commercial and residential properties on both sides, on the north and south, we definitely, we need to talk to them because then we need to sacrifice that two-way left turn lane in order to get there, to get to that cross-section that you were talking about, from Locker Center to Ramsdale.
My colleague, Ms. Friedman, mentioned to me off-camera, is there a engineering standard for the five feet as a bike lane? Can that be put to four? Can the center turn lane be squeezed to nine and grab a few feet once I leave?
From what we hear from the bicyclists that they ride, their preference is to have a six-foot bike lane and have a wider parking lane. The reason is, when they're riding this, in this cross-section, from my standpoint, this is not, you're going to have a 10-foot bike lane, travel lane, a five-foot bike lane, the bicyclists are going to be in the door zone. This is the major problem the bicyclists have. When you're creating a narrower parking lane, as soon as you open the door, you're in the middle of that bike lane, if not beyond that, which means it pushes the bicyclists further toward the travel lane, which they're also trying to avoid. In the other cross-sections that we've designed, for example, I was mentioning Verdugo Road, we're creating like a nine-foot bike lane. So you got farther away from the door zone, and a six-foot, a nine-foot parking lane and a six-foot bike lane, so the bicyclists can comfortably ride in the middle of that bicycle lane. So this is basically squeeze it down to a minimum. I think if we had lower volumes, you know, in the 5,000 to 6,000 average daily traffic, in our bicycle plan, we did put in that the minimum. So if we really need to squeeze a bicycle lane in at the lower volumes, I think that's safer to do. At the higher volumes of 13,000, which we're facing with on Honolulu, it's not going to be a huge problem, but it will, again, push the bicyclists in an area, which anticipating two bicyclists or three of them where they're riding, they still will be in this lane, which is okay, they can use the lane as well as the bike lane, but that's, that's an option. The only problem is, it's only 2,700 feet. So up to that point, from, let's say, widening width or beyond, toward getting to Locker Center, we would still have to do sharos in order to get them to that point. But it is an option. It's physically possible, it's doable.
Well, first of all, I watched the tape, and I read lots and lots of emails. I read every email that was sent to me, and there were a lot of them on all sides of this issue. Let me say, first of all, that I am very, very committed to making our streets safe for all methods of transportation and for pedestrians. I think it's one of the biggest issues I hear in the city. I get more emails about traffic safety than probably any other single issue in Glendale. And I think that traffic safety is a problem in Glendale, and it's something that I'm committed to addressing. I think that our streets need to be safe for bicycles, pedestrians, and cars. I don't think that the streets are just about cars, I think they're about bicycles as well. I also think that encouraging cycling serves lots of benefits. It serves a public health benefit in terms of helping people stay athletic and stay in shape and reduce obesity. It also reduces traffic congestion, particularly in some of our more crowded areas, gives more parking to cars. And right now, I don't think that we offer the choice of alternative transportation like bikes to people because I've, as I've had reinforced through many of the emails I've received, there are a lot of people out there who would like to be riding their bikes, who aren't riding their bikes because they don't feel safe doing so. So to me, making our streets safer for those psych... So to me, making our streets safer for those cyclists is extremely important. Now, let me say that this first road diet, if we go that way, is really a learning experience for all of Glendale. And Jono, you can sit down.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. That's okay.
I wasn't sure.
I know. Didn't want you to have to stand there. So this has been a learning experience because we haven't done this in Glendale. We've had other cities around us do this. Burbank has done a road diet, and it's been successful. And in fact, I received an email from one of the Burbank City Council members completely unsolicited, saying, "We did it, and it worked, and you guys should do it." Also, in the north part of the city, right next to Glendale in Los Angeles, they did one on Latuna Canyon Road, which was also extremely successful. That was a road that, it's a road I drive quite a bit, and they had a lot of serious speeding problems on that road, and there are a lot of cyclists on that road. And I think the cars in the past had been confused because they weren't really sure where the bicycles were gonna be, and they were sort of afraid they were gonna pop out at them. And now everyone kind of knows where their place is. The cars know where their place is. Now they have a center turn lane. The cyclists know where they're supposed to be riding, and they have less of a lane, but it hasn't really done anything except stop people from speeding a lot, but it hasn't caused congestion there. So we've seen some successful road diets around us. However, as this has been our first time doing this and a learning experience for all of us, there are some things that I wish so far we had done better, that I think in the future we will do better. I think it's a shame that a lot of the residents in the area of Honolulu feel that a decision was made without them having time to really analyze this and voice their concerns. I think that we're here having this discussion shows that their concerns are being taken seriously and have been listened to. But I think that we could have done our outreach in a better way. You know, maybe we could have done outreach over a longer period of time and really done more educating about what our goals are and what we're trying to accomplish. I also think that because the staff came to us with several choices of different locations for the first road diet, that maybe we could have done simultaneous outreach in a lot of areas, which maybe would have given the council some more data in terms of picking a street for our first experiment that maybe was the most appropriate street. In other words, Honolulu's received a lot of opposition and a lot of support, but a lot of opposition. Maybe if we had done this kind of outreach in men, for several of those streets, we could have found a location that had more support than, you know, had a lot more support and had a lot less opposition. We don't know if that's the case because we didn't do our outreach that way. So, you know, I think in terms of explaining our goals to the community, what this is about, you know, I think that's something that we need to really work on, and we need to have that communication as a community, as an entire Glendale community, not just one neighborhood. But I do hope that the community understands that they were listened to. I take the views of the supporters and the opponents very, very seriously. In fact, some of the concerns that were voiced have led to direct action through this process. For instance, the traffic routing around Trader Joe's is going to be changed based on the communities that, meetings that we had about the road diet. So that was something that was a very positive result of this happening. And some of those crosswalks in that same area are going to be upgraded as a result of having that dialogue with the community about the safety of that street. So whether you're four against the road diet, or whether after tonight you're disappointed, or you're happy and relieved, I think everybody can agree that those improvements are something that's gonna benefit the whole community. So, you know, that's something that's positive that happens when you do outreach and when the community talks about traffic safety in their area. And that's something that, given how important traffic safety is in Glendale, as we go, continue to go through this process, which I hope we will, we can hopefully do more of as different parts of the community come forward and say, "Hey, this intersection's a real problem in our community," and we can, you know, hear that from the community and address that. Also, when I was watching the tapes, I think it was the head of the homeowners association in Whiting Woods who made the comment that they felt like they didn't have sort of metrics in place about what our goals were and how we were going to judge those goals. So what, what does success look like? What does failure look like? I think as we go forward, that's something that we need to look at. Now, since this is about creating bike lanes, not about traffic calming necessarily, if you have a bike lane, you have success, right? You've sort of achieved your goal. You have a bike lane or you didn't have one before. But what does failure look like? What's acceptable in terms of if there is increased congestion, congestion, and what's not acceptable? If we can help to come up with what those metrics are, I think that would go a long way in making some of the doubters of this feel a little bit more comfortable that at least we're gonna be doing a fair evaluation and not an evaluation that's gonna say, "Hey, we've done it, and we're done," and, you know, no matter what, you're gonna have to live with the results. Because I don't think anybody up here wants to see us put a bike lane in and then, as a result, make everybody's life really miserable who's driving. That's not the intention. The intention is to put bike lanes in in places where we can have cars share the road with bike lanes. So I do believe that Honolulu would be a good place to try this experiment. However, I'm very uncomfortable with the amount of opposition that this proposal has received. I'm uncomfortable with it. I know that we're never gonna have 100% support for this kind of project. It's never gonna happen. But I still wonder whether there are other locations that have been suggested by staff where we would have less opposition. And the reason I think it's important in this case is because this is our very first road diet in the city. And we have, as somebody who supports putting these bike lanes in and supports putting together the proposed network of bike lanes and safe designated bike routes so that people can get around the city in specified places, as opposed to kind of having to pick their way around, it's really important to me that that project goes forward, that we end up with that rootage and that system, that bike system, so that someone from the north can safely get east-west and get north-south. Someone from the south can get, you know, where they're going or get to the community college. That's the ultimate goal. That goal, I believe, is more important than any single bike lane that we might put in or any single road diet. And to me, that's the most important thing. So I know that there's a lot of opposition to this, and I don't see particularly why, to me, there's no, we wanna move forward, but there's no drop-dead timetable. And I'm willing to look at those other locations because, remember, these are not roads that have been pulled out of a hat. Our staff has sat down and come up with a whole network and a whole proposal of places that would be designated bike routes, where we would try to encourage bikers to go, so don't go down brand, go down orange, let's say, and also places where road diets might make sense. And so this is not the only one that's out there. There are other ideas. And in fact, when staff came to us the first time, the last time that we discussed this, it was La Crescenta that was initially proposed. We, as council, said, maybe that's gonna be a difficult one. I had one particular council member who was very adamant that, as that was a major thoroughfare as opposed to a minor, sorry, a major arterial as opposed to a minor arterial, that Honolulu might be a better place. But it doesn't mean it's the only place. And any outreach that we've done is not wasted because we're gonna have to do the outreach for every one of these sections if we go forward with this project. So I am fine with looking at some of these other roads if it makes the project more likely to succeed, because to me, that's the most important thing. I think that Verdugo Road, going from six lanes, six lanes to four lanes, could be a very good option. I know that the merchants up there have complained about speeding on that section of road. I've drive up there all the time. I've never seen a congestion. Even when they have the farmer's market, it's not congested. It's a very good place to get people from the north of the city down to the south of the city to begin that transition if you're going downtown. And I don't see how, since you're still gonna have four lanes of traffic, two lanes in each direction, how that could create congestion. Now, I don't know. I'm not gonna say that that's the case, but I think we can do that outreach and see what the community thinks about that section of road. What do the merchants think? What do the residential houses that are along that section of Verdugo think? What do the people behind there think about that? Also, Honolulu to the west of Pennsylvania has much lower traffic counts than the other side of Honolulu and gets you to the park. That could be an interesting place to look at because it's the same road, it's still Honolulu, but would give people an idea of what Honolulu would look like if it was two lanes instead of four lanes, without having to deal with commercial driveways because it's all residential. It still gets you somewhere, gets you on bicycle to the park, and it has lower traffic counts, so there's much less chance of causing any kind of congestion. So I do think that this section of Honolulu would work. I really do. But do I wanna ram it down the throat of a neighborhood that has a very large amount of opposition and who likely will see whatever happens as a failure? I'm not sure that that will get us to the goal of being able to do this in more places and having more bike lanes in Glendale. And to me, that's the most important thing. So I'm willing to discuss it, but right now, that's kind of what I'm thinking. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Menucha also wasn't here for the meeting, but...
Yes. Was that a prepared speech, or was that...
I actually did write some notes out, I will confess, because when something's important to me, and I'll tell you, I actually had nightmares about this meeting last night because this is that important to me, and I know it's that important to the community. And I stopped reading, so I hope that in five minutes I don't find some paragraph that I thought was really, really important. If I do, I'll butt back in. But I wanted to be sure I kind of got, got my thoughts out, so. So thanks for busting me, Mr. Menucha.
Sure. Take more time if you want.
No, no, I'm done.
Yes or no?
Yes or no? I'm in favor of it, you know? I don't particularly like riding my bike on the streets. It's very unsafe, as far as I know, as far as I've experienced. It's difficult, especially in Glendale. It's difficult being a pedestrian, actually, in Glendale. I've been yelled at many times by bicyclists when I was crossing the street. What is noteworthy is that whenever they're in a group, they're much more vocal about everyone else, so. And, you know, on my bike, I've seen a number of drivers who are reckless when it comes to bicyclists. But when you put a driver and a bicyclist on the same road, it spells disaster. So I'm certainly in favor of any kind of mitigation to separate these two different commuters from each other in any way I can. And my initial gut feeling was, when we were dealing with this at the first time, was that La Crescenta would be a good street to have a road diet on, but the council at that time settled on Honolulu. That's fine. And I must say that I've received a number of emails saying, "You don't know what it's like up here." I've driven, my kid used to go to school up there by Honolulu. I've driven it for many years, taking her to school over there, so. To a certain extent, I'm familiar with the traffic, having contributed to it for a number of years. I'm in favor of it. Let's go forward with it. This is a test. I do have a few questions if, if the road diet test does not meet our expectations. Removing the stripes and going back will cost us how much, and who will pay for it?
It will be approximately the same amount of money because we have to, again, slurry seal, grind slurry seal, put the striping back in, about the same amount of money, $120,000. We're gonna have to look for that, those funds, because the TDA money right now...
The city doesn't have the money to reverse that project.
No.
I mean, our general fund does not have the money for that.
It would likely have to come out of gas tax funds, Mr. ...
Which would currently be used for road...
Road repair and upgrades.
That is, that is a major concern, you know? We were just talking about laying off employees today. You know, it's difficult. I, I find it very difficult committing any kind of funds to anything when we're laying off a number of employees. Not that I don't agree with laying off any, with anyone, if there are, you know, additional positions that we shouldn't have in the city, we should deal with that, but I always think of it in terms of, we're always dealing with people, we're not dealing with positions. And for me, people are, and their lifestyles are important, and this has nothing to do with the road diet test. But I'm going on, I'm taking my cue from council member Friedman about extending what I'm saying, but, but again, you know, I'm in favor of it. I don't like riding the streets. I really had fun off-road biking last weekend. I think I will continue that. But anything we can do to make the streets safer, I'm all in favor of it, whether it's traffic calming or separating both bicyclists and drivers, so. I'm willing to go forward with it.
Okay. Mr. Weaver, we are talking about overall concepts at this point, not just the Honolulu road diet.
Well, my comments are on both. I too wrote some notes down because I wanted to make sure that all my thoughts I've developed over the last two or three weeks, that I did mention them, and they're what I personally believe. You don't have to agree. This is an emotionally charged issue. There are two sides of this issue. There is anger on both sides. Neither side is right or wrong. Everybody has an opinion. It is a policy decision by the council where we express our opinion, what we think is best for our city. That's what we're here for tonight. It's been said that those that oppose the road diet have irrational arguments, have private agendas, are uninformed, negative thinkers, are vociferous and irrational. I beg to differ. If you wanna classify me that way, because I am not. I'm a civil engineer who took traffic courses in college, worked on street designs in my professional capacity, and observed bicyclists versus cars in Glendale for almost seventy-three years. I will make my decision based on my belief of what I think is right for Glendale, my education, my background in preparing for this council issue, and the public input in these council chambers and by emails. Surprisingly, in my lifetime and my sixteen years on council, no one, I repeat, no one time do I ever remember anyone approaching the city council about the needs of bicyclists like this firestorm has created. Where have you all been for all the time I've been here, sixteen years? A writer that has lived in this area since birth, nineteen fifty-one, wrote that she knows the area well. She says, "There is no way you will convince me that closing off a lane for a few isolated bicyclists makes good public policy or any common sense." Another singled me out, stating that "I am historically most opposed to embracing the idea that viable transportation could be more than automobiles." It's very true. Very true. Here's what I know. Most of Glendale's main arterial streets were built in the nineteen thirties and forties. The population of Glendale has increased by over 150% since that time. Glendale is one of the densest urban cities in the United States of America. Our streets were designed for automobiles, not bicycles. When comparing our city to other cities as a starter, somebody wants to criticize, you better make sure those cities in comparison have similar topography, similar street designs, similar layouts as Glendale, and are built in the same era as Glendale. It's highly unlikely that our streets can be widened sufficiently for bicycles. To widen streets, we would have to remove sidewalks, remove thousands of parkway trees, and acquire private land, probably by eminent domain, for street purposes. This is absolutely not practically, not practical or based on sound fiscal policies. You have to work with what you have. I doubt if bicycle riders understand that crosswalks on streets can give one a false sense of security. So do bike lanes. Just because you have a marked lane, there is no guarantee of safety. That's why traffic engineers do not like to put in, or crossings and intersections because you get on it and you think, "I'm impervious, no car can touch me." Just because you have it, there is no guarantee of safety. Sharos give the same false sense of security. "Not the lane, I can travel on it. Therefore, every car will know that I can be on here, and they will absolutely avoid me." The way they drive in this city, you wanna bet on it? They suppose they see that a cyclist can share a lane with a car that weighs a few tons. There's no safety. This is a recipe for disaster if you are a bicyclist that believes it. I've seldom seen bicycle riders with groceries or other store-bought items on their bikes, bike riders in the rain or the soaring heat, families riding on bikes together. I've noticed that most avid riders are in fit condition, young to middle age, have proper riding gear, know most the rules of the road. I've heard that many of these riders come from outside Glendale. We all know that many bicycle riders ride anywhere they want, such as sidewalks, run stop signs like they don't exist, block entire traffic lanes, don't follow the rules of the road that cars have to. Believe me, it's happened to me more than once. We put in bicycle lanes and more will come to use them from other cities. We don't give a written test for bicyclists, nor do we license them, but to drive a car, you do. I think a lot of bicyclists don't know the rules of the road. And we demand equal use of the roadways for the bicyclists, even though they're not taught. This proposed diet road test will only demonstrate what one possible location will result in. It's what's been said. There will be no way, no way at all to anecritically... There will be no way, no way at all, to anecritically demonstrate the success or failure of this test. No way, man. It will end up with a city council member sitting here, same as we are tonight, trying to make a decision, did it pass or fail, and should we try another location, whether it passed or failed. Go from one location to another will result in the same long-term public outreach and input every single time we try it in this city. It's going to always affect people somewhere, grocery store, school, you name it, a church, there will be objections virtually anywhere. Two more things. How do you get to the beginning of a bicycle lane, and what do you do when it ends? Starts here, goes to here. Now, how do you get to the beginning? Carry the bike down to get to where you can ride the bike, and then you get to the end, and then you carry the bike somewhere else? You get from here to here. What's that prove? Only bicycle lanes I know that work are the ones that I permitted along the LA River, that run the length of the LA River. That is a bicycle path to go. And then there's the Michigan Study. Those that want bikes, discount it. Those that oppose it, believe it, naturally. Just about every supporter of the diet road bikes rides a bike. Not surprising at all. In Honolulu, we have the Montessori School in that reach, the Robins Nest School. We have traffic issues when parents are dropping off and picking up children. Krippens Mortuary is there, and they can have services. I don't get it. Personally, I don't believe you can legislate the safety of bicycles on our public streets. The bike will always lose in an accident. In the Glendale school system, I learned that the majority rules. In a city of 190,000-plus, there are a few thousand avid bicyclists at best. The majority of residents are silent, a silent majority, I have heard from many of them. And a couple of things that personally bother me is when a person that's related to the city staff is writing letters telling us how to vote, or when an organization that is from outside of Glendale, established out in the county, writes letters to us and tells us how we should vote for Glendale, and a member of the Burbank City Council tells us how we should vote in Glendale. Like, I should write letters to Burbank and tell them what to do? That bothers me. Ah, it's no big deal, all the time. But it's no different than the organizations that want us to keep the skateboard park open. You're hearing from North Hollywood, whatever. "Oh, you can't close the skateboard park, we come over to Glendale to use it. Keep it open." Oh gee, that's nice. I thought we built the skateboard park for Glendale people, and I think if we ever did bicycle paths, it'd be for Glendale. Now, I appreciate all the emails I have received, both pro and con, and boy, there have been a lot of them. It's not an easy decision to make. Unfortunately, I know I can't please everyone with my decision. If I make half and half, I'll be lucky. I believe I've looked at the big picture of this city. I've observed the controversy over just this one little test of a mile. Based on what I have consistently said before, and what I have just stated tonight, I continue to maintain my previous position of not supporting the diet road test. For not being able to satisfy anyone, I am sorry, very sorry. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Njerian?
Thank you. I just want to make, just clarify a point that was made in response to Mr. Manukian's question. Although we have the funds to install the striping and the improvements for the bike lane, we do not have the funds readily available to revert it to the original.
That's correct, Mr. Njerian.
Okay. To me, that's a problem, because everyone believes this is just a test. If it doesn't work, we'll just snap our finger and return it to our other thing. If we were to draw funds from another source, Prop A and C, our gas tax money, it would take away from road repair, pothole paving, all the other things that we do. Okay, so for me, that's a problem. We can't talk about this as being only a test, because although, you know, we may say the test is over and we'd like to change back, it isn't that easy. There's funding that needs to be obtained, one way or the other, to do that. So, I didn't realize that until Mr. Manukian brought that up. The other clarification I'd like to make is Ms. Friedman's discussion about, you know, when we do our first road test, road diet, it better be good. Well, we did a road diet, folks, on Verdugo Road in the late 1990s, and that was a, how did it, how did that go, by the way, Mr. Zern?
We removed it almost before it was installed.
Okay, and was that because of loud and vociferous and numerous complaints by the public?
As I recall, yes.
Okay, so that's the problem. We've tried it before. It didn't work then. That was on Verdugo Road. So it's not our first shot at this. Our first shot was a failure. Just to give some historical background, I know that because I was on the TPC at that time. I think we have to find the right road to attempt this. I think public outreach has to be done. I'm not opposed to the, to looking at the Verdugo Road, but as I, as I said several months ago, referring to the Verdugo, the initial Verdugo Road diet that failed, I was, I was forecasting strong public opposition, and that's, I think, what we're getting at this point. And the irony is, you know, there have been a lot of emails going out. I have been accused of being anti-bike, anti-progressive. I was called out in a blog just recently, but I just want to make it clear, I'm not anti-bike, and I've probably done more for bicycling in Los Angeles County than anyone else on this dais. As a member of the MTA in 2007, I voted to award $36 million for 24 bike projects. In 2009, I voted to award $26 million for 14 bike projects. In 2011, I voted to award $17.3 million for 14 bike projects. I made sure that when the Orange Line was constructed, there was a dedicated bike line. I made sure that when the Expo Line was constructed, there was a dedicated bike lane. I'm currently working with the board to make a triple bicycle rack. It has to be done by legislation. We're looking for someone to pull it in Sacramento for us, on our MTA buses. On the MetroLink, we've had bike cars, completely kicked people out of the cars and reserved it for bikes. It goes on and on, lockers at the new stations, showers for bicyclists. So, the criticism that some in the bicycle community want to level at me is truly unfounded, truly unfounded. I want to do what's best for the city of Glendale, and I don't think that we're going to see that best case if we use the Honolulu segment that we've currently identified. Some may say I've changed my mind. Well, as our great President Obama said on the gay marriage issue, I've evolved, and I don't think that it's, I don't think it's best for us right now. I was hoping, I was hoping that Honolulu was going to be the best spot for this. We were looking at La Croce Avenue before, and there was a lot of opposition there. I had my fingers crossed when we proposed Honolulu several months ago, that that would be the sweet spot in the city, but I don't think it is. So I cannot support Honolulu. My mind is open, though, to consider that stretch of Verdugo between Honolulu and La Croce, pending proper outreach, pending proper buy-in by the stakeholders. That's the key to make this work. Otherwise, we're going to be shooting letters back and forth to each other in the news press, in the patch, letter upon letter, insult upon insult, and there have been a lot of insults going back and forth, if anyone's been following this. It really hasn't brought out the best of our community in this discussion. So that's where I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I am committed to bike lanes, bike paths throughout the entire city, and I'm specifically interested in coordinating it with public transportation. So for me, it's not just about sport, riding, or going out for an afternoon ride, although I think that's very important. I do it myself, and especially now in the summer. But I'm talking about active transportation, situations where people can ride to a bike or to a bus stop, put their bike on the bus, or ride to the transportation center, put their bikes on trains. I've seen it work throughout this country, as I've traveled to different cities, and of course, we've all seen it work in different parts of the world. So we're not reinventing anything. This is what makes sense. It makes sense for commuters. It makes sense for younger people that may want to ride a bicycle to a high school or a junior high, instead of having the one car after the other drop off the students. So I think it's very important that we continue to move in that direction, doing sharrows throughout the city, and bike lanes and bike paths. And the whole point is, you have to build the infrastructure. If you want to get to this point where people are inclined to live in downtown Glendale and ride a bike to the transportation center, and then get on a train and go work somewhere else in the region, you have to have the infrastructure. That's what makes sense. It's also interesting that in so many communities, initially, business people, merchants primarily, restaurants, et cetera, have been opposed to bike lanes in front of their locations. Yet, once it starts, once the bike lanes go into effect and business improves, pretty soon, it's business people on other streets that are now seeing more business take place where those lanes are located, and they start pushing for bike lanes. That's happened in numerous localities. So I think that this is something that we have to work on. We may not be prepared to do this in, this evening on Honolulu, but I think we need to continue. We've got a bicycle plan that we've been working on for a number, it's been a number of years, correct?
Correct, Mr. Mayor, and we'll be bringing that to you by the end of this month.
Right, and so at the end of the month, we're going to have the bike plan coming to us. We need to keep pushing forward. I mean, to me, it's just ridiculous to think that we, you know, that this doesn't make sense and that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't do it. And I think it's very important for Glendale, we have the urban mass to have this type of transportation become something else that the citizens of the city can, can use. So we'll wait for the bike plan and, and keep moving forward. And quite frankly, I think no one in America likes to diet, so the idea of calling this a road diet, I think was a, I think was a mistake. I'm less inclined to call it a road diet and more inclined to call it bicycle lanes and bicycle paths. I think we need to do it, and I don't just think we need to do it, we are doing it. We're moving forward with this. There's certainly support on the dais to continue to, to move forward with our bicycle lanes and bicycle paths and the sharrows and, and everything else that, that we're doing. So I think we've taken some big steps, and we'll continue to take more steps in the coming weeks and months. So, do we need a motion, or what do we need?
Can I say something, Ed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I first heartily agree with Mr. Quintero's statements. I think this is really important. Mr. Weaver mentioned the density is kind of a reason not to have bicycle lanes, but to me, that's the whole reason you want to have it, because if you have density where everybody's driving in cars and people don't feel safe to be using bikes, you're in big trouble. I think it's the solution for a city that's growing and grown, and I think it's the city people want to live in. I think people want to be in a city where they feel safe riding a bike down the street. I also just want to say that as somebody who does ride their bike around, I mean, not every day and not as much as I'd like, but I do ride to City Hall, and I do ride my bike different places, that just because a bike lane is only for a short portion doesn't mean it's not important. You know, you can take a street, be riding in the street and then come to a part where there's a bike lane and say, "Great, now I can be in the bike lane," and you go back into the street. Or you pick your route so that you're on a side street, and then you can maybe go onto a main street that has a bike lane, and then back onto a side street. So it's no reason not to do it. I just want to say that the thing that's the most disappointing to me right now is that we've had a lot of people in the bicycle and pedestrian safety community, I would say, particularly Walk-Bike Glendale, which is a new group, who spent an awful lot of time working on this project and getting signatures and tabling at the Montrose Farmers' Market and educating the community and getting the word out. And my biggest fear is that they're going to be really discouraged and really disappointed and not want to go forward. So I want to say to all of them that this is not maybe the result you want, but the important thing is looking at the whole goal, not at any one step in the goal. The important thing is getting to that place where we do have that bike network and where we do have our streets be safer for bicycles. And I think that you're hearing a lot of support for making that happen. And I think that, you know, there are ways of getting to there that may not be the most direct way, but that will still get you to the same place. And I hope that you can see that, and I hope you stay passionate, and I hope that you keep working, because I will keep working and I will keep doing what I can, and I know Mr. Njerian will, and Mr. Quintero and Mr. Manukian will do the same to, to make the city more encouraging for bicyclists. So, don't give up.
So are we abandoning the Honolulu?
I don't want to abandon Honolulu. I mean, my thing is-
What is the result?
I think that I would like to look at some of those other streets and keep Honolulu on the table, but look at those other streets and see if they make more sense. I mean, eventually, we're going to have to do the outreach for all of the proposed streets. You know, it's a process. And is there a street, whether it's Honolulu on the other side of Pennsylvania, or whether it's Verdugo, where it's six lanes right now? You know, I don't know, but I think we should at least look at those, because, you know, it's not a race, it's not like we need to do this by tomorrow or we lose all of our funding, right? And there are-
Are you patient on the funding?
No, Mr. Manukian, there isn't. And if, I think a suggestion would be, all of these locations are included in the bicycle transportation plan, which again, will be coming at the end of the month. And I think in that process, we can, we begin to look, maybe prioritize. If not, we can look at those that are, that are, that are first blush, that we go after, and at least get a pulse from the, from the area if they're, if they're amenable to this kind of a, of a improvement to the road.
Exactly. I don't want to see another Verdugo Road. I don't want to see another disaster. I don't want to see us do something that is a failure. I'd rather that we take our time and do our outreach and do our due diligence and, you know, really have all the data-
I thought we had done all of that.
Well, let me say, bicycle lanes and bicycle paths and sharrows and so forth, you are adding to the equation, in my estimation, when you do those type of things. And I was kidding about the diet, but, I mean, psychologically, there's, oh, there's this road diet. No, you're adding, you're adding to these roads, and that's my vision, if you want to call it that, for Glendale. In the northern part of the city, in the central part of the city, to the east, to the west, we begin to add more and more opportunities for people to get on their bikes. I think psychologically, drivers, when they begin to see more sharrows and a bike lane and a bike path and so forth, they begin to understand, right, that there are bicyclists using these streets. Every time you drive and see the little figure of the bicycle rider, you have to understand, gee, there are bicyclists using the street along with me, so...
And let me add one more thing, as this is going back to the drawing board. I don't want staff to be constrained in their concept for a proper bike path that doesn't take away a lane of travel, one that is dedicated. Get a plan ready, put it together, send it to the MTA on our next call for projects. I would love to vote, I'd love to send some of this money, along with the colleagues on the MTA board, to a project here that is more than just a striping project, something that maybe had, needs a little more infrastructure that would keep the bicycle community and the drivers in general at a happy balance. So let's get a plan on the shelf so we can just pull it off and say, "Here you go, this is what we'd really like to do," without having the constraints. I mean, to a large part, we're constrained by our finances here. So let's sort of break out of that, look past our limited general fund budget, our Prop A and C budget, and look for something that's a little, little more engineered, and move on with it.
Mr. Manukian, then Mr. Weaver.
Well, Mr. Weaver had his hand up for us. Go ahead, Mr. Weaver.
How much community outreach have you done on the bicycle master plan?
Let me ask Mr. Bagnani to come up, because we have spent quite a bit of time-
I mean, this is 30 square miles. Have you gone into every community and showed them what's on the plan, got their input? Have you done- Have you done that?
Yes, we have, we've held outreach meeting throughout the city for the, before the preparation of the plan, after the draft plan was prepared, and then when we had the final plan, we had outreach in different locations in the city, as well as we posted it on the city's website for whoever wanted to review it in detail. So, we believe we have a fairly good plan, which is, delineates the, the network of bicycle facilities, and we have a phased approach. In other words, where we can put in sharrows, we can do that, and then go to the next.
About how many people, on the average, attend to those meetings?
On the average, somewhere about 40, on each one of those meetings. In addition, we received written comments on them through our webpage.
I can see what's going to happen, being adopted, and you start to implement any of those, there's going to be a lot of people, I don't know, hundreds of thousands, that are going to say, "I didn't know about this, nobody told me, I've heard it for 16 years up here." Be careful. We do without public input. And just, Mr. Quintero, just to show you an example on the sharrows, I drove on Maple from Chevy Chase to Central with my wife. I says, "Look, there's sharrows here, there are bicyclists." Didn't see a single one, till I got to Central. I don't know, it was a whole group coming up Central, going northbound. I said, "Watch, I'm sure they're all going to turn onto Maple, because it has sharrows." Nope, they hit a straight up, I mean, up Central, taking a whole lane, so...
I think, sir, that you see that that's the nature of, of anything that happens in terms of a public process with a public document, and a public decision. Folks get involved when the decision is imminent. That's why I think it's that much more important to have the good analysis done by the staff that we have on the front end, and to give council a, a strong degree of confidence in what that thinking and planning is. As we bring back to you the Bicycle Master Plan, what we'll have for you, the idea of it, is really an inventory, a toolbox of different ideas that we can use. Not everything in that master plan will be implemented, not everything will be submitted, but to the extent that there are opportunities within that plan, as vetted and, and studied by the folks in Public Works Department, and certainly with the wisdom of the City Council, and the people that took the time to participate, then what, what I take away from the council discussion tonight, is that from that plan, to be able to go out and you do targeted outreach to folks where we think that we have perhaps a path of least resistance, given the very real and very practical reaction that you anticipate, to see where can at least we develop some level of consensus where we can take a positive, do a project, and continue to keep it a positive, versus taking something that should be positive and allowing it to become negative.
I'm just thinking of what you're going to do for outreach on the electric rates. You're going to really try to hit every corner of Glendale. I doubt if that's been done on the Bicycle Master Plan. Maybe it has, but...
When, when you look at the amount of outreach that was done, when you look at the outreach that's going on, and the way that we're trying to approach public outreach, at the end of the day, it's still, no amount of outreach, no matter how exhaustive it is, takes the place of making policy. Making policy means making decisions, as Truman once famously quipped. The idea for us is to make sure that we're satisfied, that we've done good outreach, that we've done good analysis, to give you confidence that whatever decision you make is a good decision.
And we'll go forth, and we'll find out what the public says to us in the future.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, well, let me, let me weigh in on this discussion.
Be my guest.
Regardless of where you go in the residential areas, you're going to have opposition. It really doesn't matter whether it's La Cremona, whether it's Chevy Chase, it's Glen Oaks, it really doesn't matter. There's always going to be a number of individuals who are for it, a number of individuals who are against it. So regardless of how much outreach we do, there are still, there are still going to be those individuals who say, "You didn't do enough." And there's going to be those individuals who say, "You did too much, you're, you're basically overwhelming us with all this information." In my opinion, we're basically delaying this decision. And, and that's fine. There aren't, the votes aren't there today to go ahead with this, with this test, then, you know, that's fine, we'll move on to something else. But regardless of where they go, where staff goes, what kind of outreach they do, it's not going to work. In residential areas, you know, Verdugo, it's not going to work unless you block off lanes, and take out parking spaces, and have, have bicycle lanes. It's, it's not going to work. Residential areas, some people are always going to be against it. We have, I think, in the hills, it's very difficult to ride. I actually, you know, I would like to know what the rules are for these big groups of bicyclists who kind of take up the streets, especially on, you know, I live on Chevy Chase, so I can just speak from my experience. And, you know, they take up the whole road, and, and they're not commuters, they're doing it for a sport, and they take up the, the streets and just basically hold up traffic, and they won't yield to oncoming traffic. That is, that is a big issue for me. And sometimes there's three of them, they ride abreast, ride in the middle of the road, they do understand that they're part of the road as well, they, they have to obey traffic rules, but they don't yield to cars. They just continue riding in the middle of the street, and if you kind of go around them, you can get a ticket, because you're crossing a double yellow line, you know, and they, they'll yell at you, if you, if you even come close. So, first, I would like to know what to do about that. Second, I think our, our most viable alternative would be bicycle lanes in the downtown. We've talked many years about having one-way streets in the downtown. I believe that, that, you know, I will vote, bicycle lanes wherever, that's fine, but I think the most viable and logical alternative is because we, is in the downtown, because we have over 1,000 units coming to downtown. That's where, you know, in the residencies, in the, in the hills, yes, we do have congestion, but it's limited, because they can't build additional units. But in the downtown, we're, we're building additional units, and we're going to have massive traffic in the downtown, in my opinion. That is where we have to address for the next 10 years, 10, 10 to 20 years, how do we deal with that traffic? Let's make some of these streets, I would like to see Orange Street only a bike lane, and no cars allowed. Or make it a one-way street, and half the street make it a bicycle lane, and the other half make it a one-way auto lane, a car-driving lane. Same with the other streets in downtown, but it has to be planned in such a way where these streets lead to somewhere. We can't have bicycle lanes that lead to nowhere. Because it doesn't help with safety. If I, if we make Orange Street, a lane in Orange Street, bicycle, bicycle lanes, at that point, once they are done with the bicycle lane, then they have to go on the streets again. It would behoove us to kind of plan the bicycle lanes in the downtown area, and the surrounding areas, not in the residential areas, in such a way where bicycle lanes similar to regular lanes, traffic lanes, that lead to somewhere, that go to certain residential apartment units that are being built, that lead to the Americana, the Galleria, to Midtown, Mid, Midbrand. Somehow, I'm sure if our traffic engineers kind of put their heads together and come up with kind of a traffic flow for the bicycle riders in the downtown, who are residing downtown, who want to go to, let's say, Rite Aid, or want to go to Big Five, or Sears, or want to go to Americana, or down to the car dealerships, look at what, how much cars cost, instead of buying them. They should look at the traffic flow of the bicycle lanes and the traffic flow of the cars, and try to make as many streets, one-way streets, so that we can accommodate bicycle lanes in the downtown, so that we can separate these two types of commuters. I think that would be the best alternative, as we're dealing with bicycle issues, and, and traffic, and commuters in the downtown. And we have to plan for the future, and the future is in the next 10, 20 years, these units are coming online, actually, in the next two to five years, these units are coming online, and we're going to be facing huge traffics in the down. We, we have traffic in the downtown already, it's going to add to it. Let's do something now to mitigate that traffic that is coming, and make bicycle lanes in downtown, make, do one-way streets. You know, I go, I go to Old Town Pasadena, and, and I'm always running into one-way streets. They have them there. It doesn't affect negatively their traffic, their traffic circulation, and I don't see why you can't do it here. I'm not saying, let's take an example from Pasadena, that's not the point. The point is, let's determine the traffic flow that we want to implement in the downtown for the bicyclists and the cars, not just the cars. That's when we have a viable alternative plan to a bicycle plan in the neighborhood that takes away, you know, half the lanes, so...
Mr. Zern, the bicycle transportation plan is going to have exactly that type of detail, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was just going to add, and Mr. Ochoa referred to it as a toolbox, what we're discussing tonight is, is one particular concept, the road diet concept, and there's options in there, but the, the plan covers a, a lot of different options for putting in bike lanes, for doing street reconfigurations, for putting in pedestrian-type safety measures as well.
My suggestion is, let's stay away from residential areas and concentrate on the downtown. Whatever we have to do in the downtown to mitigate the oncoming onslaught of traffic, that's where we need to go. And bike lanes are one way of mitigating traffic in the downtown.
And we, we do have those downtown areas covered.
Then let's, let's start there, not in the residential areas.
Okay, do we need to take any action, what?
Mr. Mayor, I think we do need a motion to just put the Honolulu test case on hold, and bring it back with, as, all, all the options that are on the table with respect to the Bicycle Master Plan.
Okay, is there a motion?
A motion to table it, basically.
Oh, a motion to put...
Yeah, well, I, I'd like a motion just to, because there was already a previous motion to, to move forward with it, so I think we need a motion to put that test case on hold, and bring it back with all the options that are, are discussed as part of the Bicycle Master Plan.
I'll move to put it on hold, and for staff to come back with the different options that were discussed at this meeting.
There a second?
I'll second.
Full call?
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Menuchyan?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hello?
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next.
9A is the Director of Community Development regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources, nomination for the property located at 1646 Golf Club Drive. At 9A1 is resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
Yes, I'm not certain, but I believe that this residence is probably within the range of the 500 feet of my residence, so I have not consulted with the city attorney, but either way, I'm going to recuse myself from any kind of deliberation on this, on this item.
An abundance of caution.
Yes, there you go. So I'll be in the back, reading my emails.
Periodically, sir, we have the opportunity to consider very unique, single-family residences and other properties for historic designation and placement on the Register of Historic Places. We have that here with a very unique architecture at this property on Golf Club Drive. Mr. Platt, our historic planner, will take you through the details of it.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm glad that Mr. Ochoa used the word "unique" so that I don't have to. We try not to use it, but I do think in this case, we have a property that really does say something unique about the architecture in Glendale. The owners of 1646 Golf Club Drive are requesting a Glendale Register listing, as well as a Mills Act contract. When the Historic Preservation Commission considered this proposal, it voted unanimously to recommend that council vote in favor of both the designation and the Mills Act contract. And I have a few slides just to show the property. You can see it here, sitting on Golf Club Drive in the Chevy Chase neighborhood. It overlooks the Country Club to the rear from the view that we're looking at here, and we see kind of two kind of modernistic Japanese pavilions floating in the woods, basically. It's a very interesting house that was designed in 19, built in 1979 by architect Gordon Steen. He was deeply influenced by Japanese architecture. He was also a modernist, he was interested in the environmental movement of the 70s, and all of these factors kind of come to play in this house. And in this shot, you can see that it really does just kind of jut out from the street and hover into the, into the woods. And here's a shot that really shows the structural system that makes it so unique. The house is completely supported by these ponderosupine poles that not only support the platform of the house, but extend through the house and go up and support the roof. The, the house is completely made of wood in almost all aspects. It has many different types of wood, it's got a very rustic feel, but it also has a modern quality. This, again, makes it kind of something unique, even looking at our modern architecture in Glendale. In the lower photo, you can see this little bridge that connects the house to the land. That's really the only way you get onto, onto the, the, the platform that holds up the house. So that's your only access point, is over the bridge. Here are some images of some similar early Japanese architecture that seems to be the kind of forerunner for this house, in its design and structural system. Here's a close-up view of the structural system with the posts set in the concrete pads. There's obviously modern steel incorporated in this, so it's not like a traditional Japanese construction. Here's a example of that construction system, and you see it's a relatively modest house in scale, and two stories are actually tucked into the volume, appears to be one, when you look at it, one-story high when you look at it from the street. Here's a photograph showing some of the detail work at the entryway.
Have the Julia Schulman photo on the bottom?
This is the Julia Schulman, actually, yes, this is a Schulman photo here, and this is also a Schulman photo. The house was featured in the LA Times Magazine in 1980, and the famous photographer Julia Schulman was called in to take the pictures. So the Historic Preservation Commission recommends that if council votes to designate the house, that it be called the Steen House, Issey Homestead. Steen, because Gordon Steen was the first owner of the property, and he called this Issey Homestead, because it was kind of the first of a model that he developed, that he was trying to distribute, or market around the world, actually. And there are several others in this country. There's actually one in England, which is even stranger than here in Glendale. But this is the only property like this that we have in Glendale, certainly by Steen.
What's the roof made out of?
It's a composite tile. It's not, it's not the original roof, but it fits the Japanese character of the house.
Is it originally wood?
It's originally shake, yeah. The owners are here, if you have any other questions.
Well, I am all for it. I had the opportunity to visit inside this house, see the inside of the house, and it is truly unique. The setting is just unique, and I think it's a tremendous addition to the city, so I'm behind it 100%.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, did you, did you open the hearing?
I'll open the public hearing. I do have some speakers. Mr. Najarian?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know, do you know the historical background? I have a couple of historical questions. Did this pass design review?
It seems to have, yes.
Do you think it would have passed today?
I'd be surprised. It would pass design review, I don't know if it would pass building. I'm not sure, we haven't looked into that, but that's kind of an interesting question.
I mean, my, my point is that it's clearly a unique, and beautiful, and outstanding example. I'm just wondering if our whole design review system encourages this type of creativity in architecture? Just that musing that I'm having?
We like to think that we're very open to new and interesting design.
And, once we get past Design Review Board, we've got the Chevy Chase homeowners, who are very much sticklers for design and building on hillsides. Is there any record of, of opposition to this, this home?
None.
There was no opposition, or we couldn't find any?
There's nothing in our record.
1946? I don't know if the home was...
1979.
No, it was recent.
Originally?
Seventy, yeah.
I thought it was 46, I read.
Oh. I mean, I would guess, and I don't want to speak for Chevy Chase Estates, but they probably would have some objections to this, currently, we're, we're such a model. Which, again, calls into the, calls into question, you know, I think the flexibility and the, the trust that we have to have in some designs that aren't your typical design. I mean, they would say too much ma, I mean, in other words, too much massing, needs to be put into the hillside, and it's not in conformity with the homes in the, this isn't in conformity with any other home, probably in the whole city. So on that basis alone, I could see, you know, those adamant opponents getting to that. But it's a beautiful house, clearly something we should treasure and support for Mills Act protection.
And you came in front of council for design review.
It got mixed up. I saw the address 1646, translated to 1946.
You came in front of council, like some of our projects do in the downtown specific area, they might be told, "We don't want anything modern, we want Spanish, or we want craftsmen." Just continuing on, Mr. Najarian.
Orange colors and neon green.
This is a really mixed house. It's rustic, it's modern, it's traditional, it's got it all.
But what would the fire department say about a house like this today?
That's another question I can't answer, but it obviously raises some issues.
Canterlever houses were... Canterlieber houses where fire can come up underneath it and burn it. I think that's the known note today.
Probably why they got rid of the roof.
I know there is some, there is some fireproofing material under the house that's required.
Okay, I have two speakers, Stephanie Lanegrin, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members. I'm here in support of you all approving this wonderful architectural building, and I just thank you for allowing me to say that.
Thank you. Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members, and the viewing audience. I've been to that house, it's beautiful. Do approve it, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move nine A one.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes, and let me just say, I haven't been invited over yet. Looking forward to it.
Get out.
Manukian? Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Beautiful, unique home, and I'm glad it's on the registers, it'll be preserved.
I looked it up on Google, and I couldn't see the house.
Right, it sits in the.
If I may, just on the issue of Mr. Manukian's abstention, will, if he was indeed within the 500 feet, for the record, his vote will be treated as a recusal as opposed to an absent or abstention.
Just for the record, it is a very nice house. I've passed by it many times. And I had nothing to do with the decision that they've made.
Okay, next, please.
Next, at nine B, another hearing is Director of Community Development regarding proposed ordinance to establish Rossmoyn Historic District Overlay Zone. At B one is ordinance for introduction.
Good evening. This is the, now the fourth historic district that City Council will be considering since we established our historic district ordinance in 2007, and this is by far the largest. This is the Rossmoyn Historic District. I think everyone at the dais knows where Rossmoyn is. What we're looking at is a group of 504 parcels, 503 single-family homes, and Nibley Park, which is a city-owned park that was originally part of the development of Rossmoyn and was gifted to the city by the developers, and you can see it serving as kind of the heart of historic Rossmoyn and current Rossmoyn. When the applicants were looking at a boundary, and you may have heard from some people in the public, there have been a lot of questions about this boundary, particularly at the western side, what we're looking at is the historic boundary of the Rossmoyn subdivision in large, especially the areas of it north of the Wash. You can see in this early map, the Wash didn't exist, and there's this area down here, which was blown out partly by the Wash and also partly by the freeway. There's a remnant of it left, but it doesn't feel like it's part of the Rossmoyn neighborhood anymore because of that separation and the changes. So the 504 parcels are within the historic Rossmoyn boundary that was laid out in 1923 by the Haddock-Nibley Corporation.
That address the concerns of people that have sent us emails that are living to the west and resent that they're not being included.
Right. There's a possibility the neighborhoods to the west could be different historic districts. That area was developed.
Yeah, so they should talk to the planning department and find out the mechanism to create another historic district.
Yes, and that area is also represented by the same homeowners association, which is also interested in that, so. The Haddock-Nibley Corporation came to Glendale, they originally developed the Adams Hill area, which was then called Acacia Hills, and then Judge Erskine Mayo Ross's land came available, which was mainly orange groves, and that became what is now the residential neighborhood known as Rossmoyn. You can see it was heavily marketed in the Los Angeles Times and local papers, and a lot of money went into that. This was a very high-end development for the time. Here's an early photograph, you can see a covered reservoir where the Wash is, some of the early homes that were being developed. And one of the coolest things that we have is this kind of Hollywood-like sign that was put up on the hills to advertise Rossmoyn far and wide. The development was kind of a higher, higher end in terms of the requirements, in terms of the value of the lots, the minimum requirements for the cost of the homes, the placement of concrete streets, the light standards that were placed in that were unique to the area at the time and are common now and are still in place now. And then here's an early photograph of Nibley Park to show you what that looked like, and that was a really striking feature to have a park dedicated to a new development in Glendale. The neighborhood now contains a great array of all of the classic period revival styles of the '20s and '30s. Probably some of the best examples that we have in Glendale can be found in Rossmoyn. And the period of significance for the area that was determined by our consultant, who did the historic resource survey, extends from 1923 to 1950, so it also brings in some of the minimal traditional and ranch-style houses that were kind of infill development just after the war. By 1950, the neighborhood was pretty much built out the way we see it today. Just to remind council of the process that we've gone through, there's a lot of public input that's built into our historic district ordinance. Each of these blue-shaded boxes means there's another step, where there's either a public meeting, we're accepting petitions, there's a hearing at the Historic Preservation Commission. We've heard from many people throughout this process, we haven't developed any organized opposition. Not everyone in the neighborhood is going to support the idea of a historic district, but there is a lot of support, as I'll mention in a second, for creating this district. Your vote today in introducing the ordinance is perhaps the second-to-last step if you do approve to move forward in terms of getting the district designated. Previously, the Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission have heard this, and they both recommend that council designate the historic district. When the consultants put together this very voluminous historic resource survey that we were able to get for a very good price, we had a grant from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that offset almost, or over half the cost of the study for Rossmoyn. The consultant, LSA Associates, found that the proposed district meets six out of our nine criteria for designation, and our ordinance requires that only one of those criteria be met. These are the six, I'm not going to go through those. And then I mentioned that the period of significance ends in 1950. One thing that's very important in terms of our ongoing review, if the district is designated in terms of doing design review, is knowing which houses contribute to the historic character of the district and which houses are non-contributors. A contributor was built within that period of significance, and it also retains a lot of its historic integrity. It doesn't mean that it hasn't been changed to some degree, but it basically still tells the story of what a Spanish house from 1929 might look like. A non-contributor is either built outside of that period of significance, or it's lost its integrity through alterations that are too dramatic. They take away too much of the character. The historic ordinance requires that 60% of the homes be contributors. In Rossmoyn, we have 82% contributors, and for a district this big, our consultant was kind of amazed that we have that much integrity in Rossmoyn. That's very, very high for a district of this size. So to sum up, we, the last step in the public process besides the last series of meetings is for the proponents of the district to circulate a petition throughout the neighborhood, asking if people who own properties there support the district or not. So basically, the people who sign the petition are asking council to designate the historic district. We had 359 homes, the owners, if there are two owners of a house, both of them have to sign the petition. This led to a 71%, 71% of the owners are asking, or I'm sorry, 71% of the properties request that the council designate this historic district. There hasn't been any formal opposition, there was no opposition petition submitted, and what this means is that all of the ordinance requirements have been met, and now it's up to council to decide whether it wants to vote to designate the Rossmoyn historic district.
Those five slash 24 HPC votes to recommend mean?
Yeah, those are just the dates of the hearings. We had a May hearing and a June hearing. I'm available?
Six four is June 4th, I suppose?
Yeah.
I have a question. So. So remind, remind me, and those who aren't familiar with this, what does it mean to have a, to be part of a historic district, and what limitations or restrictions does that place on any particular homeowner in that district?
Okay, a historic district is a zone change. It creates a historic district overlay that lays on top of the existing zoning, so the underlying zoning doesn't change in a historic district. If the district is designated, property owners are, the design review authority shifts from the Design Review Board to the Historic Preservation Commission if someone is proposing to change their, anything on their property. In a historic district, this design review authority that's based on the historic district guidelines that council approved in 2007, at the same time as the ordinance, applies only to things that are visible from the street. There is still design review, just as there is on every other property in Glendale for other changes, but, for example, if someone said, I want to put vinyl windows on the front of my house in a historic district facing the street, we'd say, I'm sorry, the historic guidelines don't allow that, so we can't approve that at staff level. An owner could apply to the Historic Preservation Commission to hear that. At this point, I think it would be unlikely that that would be approved, but if someone said, I want to put vinyl windows on the back of my house where they can't be seen from the street, we'd be able to prove that at staff level.
So they would still have the same ultimate appeal body, which would be the city council?
Exactly.
So rather than going to the DRB, it would go to the historical preservation?
What we're trying to do is make the process as parallel as possible.
Now, you're not going to go retroactive, are you, and go through the neighborhood and say, this house doesn't have, you know, this has vinyl windows, or this was done without?
The conditions at the time of designation, which are documented in the survey forms, are the conditions that are grandfathered in.
So it's amnesty up until today?
Up until today.
Up until the vote?
Well, it won't take effect today, so.
Okay. But then going, this is all going forward perspective, and you're not going to go back and?
No, we can't, and we don't want to.
And be historical district police.
Be going back on our word to everyone we talked to, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay, I have a group of speakers. Our speaker is Lorna Bartanian, and the mayor apparently was going to give you five minutes, and everybody else, two or three, depending on what he says.
Ms. Bartanian is the applicant, the president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association.
You're the applicant?
Yes, so she'll get five, she'll get five minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff, my name is Lorna Bartanian. I'm president of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association and co-chair of the Rossmoyn Historic District Committee. Today is a day the Rossmoyn neighborhood has looked forward to for many years, and before you tonight is the culmination of an effort which began two and a half years ago in November 2009, when 20 neighbors volunteered to begin the ambitious task of knocking on over 500 doors in the original Rossmoyn tract to determine the level of support for a historic district. Armed with our historic district notebooks, the city's historic district guidelines, and a lot of enthusiasm, our efforts were bolstered by an overwhelming eagerness from residents to see the project get underway. With great results from our unofficial survey, we officially began the process in April 2010, when we submitted a formal application to the city. I always knew Rossmoyn was special, but I didn't really know how special it was until I started doing the research. As you have seen by Mr. Platt's presentation, the Rossmoyn neighborhood was meticulously planned. Building restrictions set high standards, and only period revival architecture, such as the Spanish Tudor and colonial styles we see today, was allowed. Home plans had to be approved by the Development Office, and residents were required to spend a certain amount on building their homes. In order to maintain the pristine natural setting of Rossmoyn, there were restrictions on building above the foothills. In the words of developer Alex Nibley in 1922, "We have taken the most superb home section yet left in Southern California and planned there the most perfect home community human ingenuity could provide." Nibley, in fact, was so concerned with preserving his vision that the restrictions were to be kept in place for 50 years until January 1st, 1972. He was also so committed to the neighborhood that he built his family home on the street known today as Cortez Drive. I think it would be fair to say that most current Rossmoyn residents chose the neighborhood specifically because of the character of the area, much as residents did when the tract was originally planned and marketed in the 1920s. As a historic district, it is not our intent to create a neighborhood frozen in time, because we recognize that change is inevitable within all neighborhoods over time. But as a historic district, we can better guide those changes to ensure they are compatible with the established character of Rossmoyn. To that end, we are very fortunate to have an ordinance in place which governs this process and a thorough set of historic district design guidelines, which address each homestyle individually, creating an efficient design review process for both homeowners and commissioners. Our final petition, which you are reviewing tonight, required signatures from 50% of all homeowners of homes in the district. However, as you have already seen, we have collected signatures from 71% of all owners of homes in the district. Over the past two and a half years, we've done three full canvases of all 503 homes in the neighborhood, and each of those has required multiple visits to each home. It has been a long and incredible journey, which has taken a lot of community effort, coordination, commitment, and countless hours of volunteer time to get us to this point. This process has also made us keenly aware of how many different elements create a neighborhood and the challenges that are difficult to overcome when trying to collect this many signatures, such as elderly persons who don't answer their door, neighbors who won't make time to listen, people who simply can't make a decision either way, vacancies, rentals, and inevitably couples who don't agree. In conclusion, as custodians of a neighborhood which was built on the premise of history and preservation, with a level of craftsmanship and quality of design which cannot be duplicated today, we hope the council will agree that Rossmoyn deserves protection as a historic resource of the city of Glendale. And I wanted to definitely thank Mr. Platt for shepherding us through this process. We wouldn't have gotten as far as we did without his amazing knowledge and guidance. And over the course of this process, we had an amazing number of residents volunteer as block captains and step forward to knock on doors and make this happen. It definitely was a community effort. I know many of them are here in the audience today, and I know many supporters are here, so if I may, I'd like to ask everybody who helped as a block captain or who lives in the district or supports to please stand up. Thank you all for coming. Thank the council.
Okay, as Mr. Manukian mentioned in the previous hearing, I was a past president of the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association. I worked on this issue. However, in my case, I don't live within 500 feet.
I don't know, I think we have to measure this point.
Of this, so I feel that I can take a balanced approach to the, to the issue tonight. Mike Mohill, followed by Robert Bunatian.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members and the viewing audience. I lived in Glendale approximately 60 years, and I know the Rossmoyn area. It's a beautiful area, and I'm so happy to see that the neighbors got together and decided to make their neighborhoods special. I love to see people power. People organize, get involved, and make a difference, and I applaud the residents of the Rossmoyn area. Thank you.
Robert Bunatian, followed by Harry Zavos.
Good evening, council members. My name is Robert Bunatian. I'm a resident of Glendale, and I'm here to voice my opposition against, against the ordinance for the historic district, and it's essentially for economic reasons. What programs like historical districts do is restrict the turnover of existing supply, and they artificially raise the prices of the housing stock. While this is beneficial for the existing residents, it hurts potential buyers by pricing them out. In essence, you have restricted the supply of housing and artificially raised the prices of houses. In restricting the turnover of the housing stock, you have just, and help, helps to restrict job growth. This is because you will now need less plumbers, electricians, and painters. So in one swoop, you have made housing much more expensive while restricting employment opportunities. Historical districting in combination with open space laws, inclusionary laws, subsidized housing, zoning laws, and other laws. housing, zoning laws, and other laws, have restricted the supply of housing in Glendale and artificially raised the prices again. What these policies have done is make shelter much more expensive than it has to be. The irony is that if you have more of these laws, more and more residents will be priced out, and more and more residents will be looking for affordable housing, which in turn raises the costs of housing. This is vicious cycle that you'll help to support from the council members to the voters of Glendale. And what I'd like to conclude is, Councilwoman Friedman, and I'm paraphrasing from the newspaper, said that this might help to raise the prices of the houses. Well, my question to you, Councilwoman Friedman, is why do the special folks for that portion need to have their prices risen and not somewhere else, say, in South Glendale? Why do they deserve that and not the other one? And if prices are to be risen with this one, why don't we just raise all of the prices, all of the housing in Glendale? Thank you.
Harry Zavos, followed by Herbert Milano.
Councilman, my name is Harry Zavos. I'm on this item. I'm here as a co-chair of the Historic District Committee, and as you well can imagine, it's a prodigious task to survey the owners of over 500 homes, with having to go back repeatedly until you get all the owners there, sometimes finding that's a renter, going back repeatedly and hearing people in the house who just don't care to answer their door. But I think the justification for the effort was best given by the city's consultant, who was doing the historical resources survey. Lorna and I were out collecting signatures, and we ran into her, and she volunteered, and I might add, enthusiastically volunteered, that our neighborhood was the most architecturally rich and intact neighborhood that she had ever surveyed. With this proposed overlay zoning, you will ensure that as this neighborhood changes, as it surely will, it will change with a kind of sensitivity that will not undermine or destroy the feel and character of what is, I believe, an aesthetic asset for the city of Glendale.
Herbert Milano, followed by Zanku Armenian. I don't see Mr. Milano. Zanku Armenian, followed by Sean Bursell.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff, my name is Zanku Armenian. I'm a homeowner in the Rossmoyn area, as well as on the board of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association. I also helped work and collect signatures on this effort, and I hope this will be an easier decision for you compared to many of the other decisions that you're often faced with. You know, we, we have a special place in Glendale, with Glendale, and what makes it special is the character of our neighborhoods. And by passing this application, you will essentially be helping protect what is special about the city of Glendale and what makes this particular neighborhood special, and that's what brought out so much support to get all the signatures. I think respecting our roots and respecting our history is to respect ourselves, and I think that by passing it, we will show that we want Glendale, a certain quality of life in Glendale, and this will help preserve that quality in our neighborhoods. You know, one of the speakers was worried about keeping people out of neighborhoods, and that's really not the case. What keeps values up is when the quality of your neighborhood is kept up, when there's community in the neighborhood. And I will say that even just this effort itself helped bring the community and the neighborhood together, and, and I think it's, it's a wonderful thing to see happen as someone who believes in civic participation. And I want to particularly point out, there were a lot of volunteers that helped with this, and, you know, I'm indebted to all of them as a homeowner, fellow homeowner, but I also wanted to recognize the efforts of Lorna Vartanian, our chair. Every team needs a leader, someone to keep us moving forward, and she really did that, and so I wanted to make sure that I recognize that. Thank you very much.
Sean Bursell, followed by Stephanie Landegren.
Mayor Quintero, members of council, my name is Sean Bursell, and I'm a member of the Board of the Glendale Historical Society, and I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Glendale Historical Society, which enthusiastically supports the establishment, establishment of the Rossmoyn Historic District. Mr. Platt and Ms. Vartanian did a tremendous job in giving you the background of this, explaining why this area meets the criteria for an historic district and why it should be designated. I will not review that, except to say that we endorse their remarks. One thing that I think is important to keep in mind is that maintaining the character of an area within an historic district benefits not only the residents of that area, but the residents of the entire city of Glendale, because all residents, our residents today and our residents in the future, will be able to enjoy the beauty and the charm of the neighborhood. And I know, just as someone who lives a short distance away from there, when we have people from out of town, we take them through that area, because it's so beautiful and it's so evocative of a special time and a special place in Glendale. So it is something that all the residents of the city can enjoy. The other thing that it does is that it can serve as an example for homeowners in other parts of the areas of the city to maintain the character of their homes. And I was struck by Mr. Weaver's remark about the people who live in areas adjacent to it saying, "Why aren't we included?" Isn't that wonderful to hear that from, from homeowners? Finally, I just want to say, echo the remarks about the nominators, Sharon Hyder Doris, Lorna Vartanian, and Harry Zavos, who did a tremendous job, and Lorna especially poured her heart and soul into this, and we thank them all. Thank you.
Stephanie Landegren and Sharon Hyder Doris.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as Chair of the Planning Commission, when this came to us, it was unanimously recommended that we send it to you for approval. I have to tell you, this is beautiful city planning. You go to this neighborhood, when I first moved to Glendale 20 years ago, that is where I wish I lived. I'm happy where I am, but I would probably be happier in Rossmoyn, but I encourage you to, to pass this and to preserve this really beautiful neighborhood that is such a jewel. Thank you.
Final card, Sharon Hyder Doris.
Mayor Quintana and members of council, I'm on the historic district project and also a board member of the Rossmoyn Homeowners Association. Having worked on this project for two and a half years and met with dozens and dozens of homeowners, probably close to 300 individuals, there's an overwhelming support for this project. The community is very excited, and on behalf of all of us, we hope that you will vote in favor of it. Thank you.
Okay, that's the final card. Close public hearing. Comments from the dice. Ms. Friedman.
Well, Zanku Armenian is right, there are decisions that are difficult, and there are decisions that are very easy. And for me, this is a very easy decision, and I've been waiting for this to come forward for quite some time, and I'm very happy to see that just a few years ago, I remember the battle to even have historic districts that could go forward that didn't require, what did it used to be, 100% approval? I remember fighting that battle, and then seeing our first historic district come forward, and now seeing more and seeing Rossmoyn come forward, and I'm very, very happy to be able to vote for this today. And I also want to acknowledge all of the volunteers, because this really is a grassroots, ground-up effort that's a lot of work, and to put in those time, that time and that sweat equity is not easy. And so I want to, I can't thank everybody, but I want to particularly call out Lorna for all of the work that she has done and continues to do, and her board, and also the Glendale Historic Society, and of course Jay Platt. We pay him, but I've known Jay for a long time, and he'd probably do this even if we didn't pay him. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but, but he's very, very, he's very, yeah, hmm, let's talk about that. But, you know, he's very passionate, and, you know, he's great at supporting you, but it was really the neighborhood that initiated this, and it made this happen. So as someone who lives not in Rossmoyn, but, but in Glendale, I want to thank all of you, all of the homeowners, for taking those steps to preserve this beautiful neighborhood for future Glendaleans. It's a great neighborhood, it's a great district, and I'm very proud to live in a city that has such a beautiful historic district as this. Thank you.
Other comments? Mr. Menugian, then Mr. Najari.
Yes, I wasn't sure how I was going to vote on this item. It's always a concern when it, when we're dealing with additional restrictions on, on the area, and I wasn't really sure what I was going to do, so I turned to my appointee to the Historic Preservation Commission, and I asked her, I said, "Lorna, what do you And she said, "Oh, you should vote for it, it's great." So I'm in favor of it. Good job, everyone.
She didn't tell me she was the chair.
Thank you. I am not going to vote for this unless you all agree to put Rossmoyn back up on the hillside. Can we do that? No, no, in all seriousness, I, no, I am serious, I would, I will vote for this historic district, but I really think that Rossmoyn sign is very characteristic, it's historic. I don't know what's up there now, probably a bunch of homes have been built into there, but, but if, Lorna, your next job is to see if there's a spot for that, I think it's really cool. I think would really give a touch of...
I've been asking the speakers if they've seen already.
Might be up there, yeah. Maybe that's a sign issue and all that, we can discuss for another day, but I do think it's cool. I mean, I really think it's, it was probably there before Hollywood was, wasn't it? Possibly. That's, that's a job for Jay Platt to research the, the history on it. No, I think it's great, it's a great neighborhood, let's preserve it.
Mr. Weaver, I know you worked on the initial paving for the subdivision, so what's your, what's your...
You know, that joke never gets old. That's amazing.
Well, I was going to say, I arrived here in July 1939 in Glendale, and many times over those years, I've gone up in that area, and all I can say, it's about time. You know, you think 100 years from now, you'll be able to go up in that area and it'll look virtually the same. That is remarkable in a city where there's continual redevelopment and recycling. It can't happen there again. And it's been said, I guess, one of the big benefits out of this, you have to be one of the closest knit communities in Glendale now. You've talked to so many neighbors, everything, that's only going to be pluses for all of you in the years to come, and I sure hope it's a stimulus to others, like the ones to the west, that want to do this. Just call Laura, she'll tell you how to, she'll tell you how to do it, or the city here, we got to get them going, because there's other areas here that really need that historic designation, so, very happy for all of you.
Okay, well, when I was a president, there were two major issues for Rossmoyn Mountain, and that was traffic and neighborhood preservation. The traffic was difficult to deal with, the cut-through traffic from the college and so forth, but I think we managed to come up with compromises, and as a result, I think traffic has been calmed throughout Rossmoyn, and, and parking issues, not just, you're right, not just cut-through traffic, but also parking. And the historic preservation took a while. I want to thank Elaine Wilkerson, all the work that she did, she was certainly instrumental. Mr. Hargani, of course, was right there, and the rest of the staff, I think they did a wonderful job. And Lorna has taken the organization and made a commitment to the historic district, and I thank her, along with all of the board members and neighbors and everyone else. It was truly a, a great accomplishment, and a lot of work, just going through the steps, a lot of work. I think it is also something that's going to encourage other neighborhoods in the sense that this is a huge neighborhood, and yet we found consensus and moved forward. And then finally, I want to thank Lorna's husband, long-suffering husband, Ruby Sullian, a quiet man who rarely voices, who rarely voices his opinion, but I know he supported her in all of her endeavors. No one mentioned him, I just felt the need to do so. But congratulations to the neighborhood, I think it's wonderful, it's a great day for Glendale in general. I always take, when I have visitors from out of town, I always drive through Mountain and Rossmoyn and, and show them the different homes that are just spectacular. People will continue to update their homes, well, it doesn't mean that you can't do lots of things to your home, but it'll all be done in the right context and, and, you know, sort of keep the, keep the flavor and the architectural significance of so many of these properties, so...
Mr. Mayor, did you say I was the paving contractor?
No, I thought you...
As such, I'd like to introduce the ordinance at 9B1.
Mr. Weaver has introduced the ordinance, and it will actually be voted on, and as you can tell, it'll be a, a majority vote, so...
Yeah, you don't need to come back, we'll take care of it. Mr. Mayor, we did something positive for you.
Yeah, nice way to cap the evening. Now, if you stick around for oral communication, it won't be quite so positive.
They're leaving.
All right, next, please.
Next is oral communication. Discussion is limited, item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Shh. How to hear? Okay, we'll start with Anahee Pandagian, followed by Pauline Pachigian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, staff, and the audience. I'm here today first of all to thank city manager, Mr. Ochawa, and city council member, Rafi Menugian, for their time to listening my question, my problem, even it has remained unsolved. And today, I would like to mention about another issue, which is again being harassed and threatened by the tenant of unit number C and their friends. The most recent incident was on June 5 at 7:00 PM. My brother and I returned home, and when he attempted to drive the car into our parking space, we noticed a black four-door Audi with license plate number AIJ400 blocking our path. When my brother honked the horn, the driver of Audi stepped out of his car and wanted my brother to drive past his car, in spite of the fact that there wasn't enough space. Apparently, the intent was to create an accident or a reason to fight with us. I told him to move the car, especially since he not, he not only was blocking our entrance, but he was not a tenant in the first place and had no right to park in his, his car in the driveway. He began to curse us, calling us crazies, sorry, and I would like to repeat the same word what he said to, to address to me, and horrors. He yelled at me, my brother threatening him to get out of his car in an apparent challenge to fight. Then he motioned to his private part and yelled at me to come get it. That was an assault I had never been subjected to in my whole life. I'm a respected person in this community, and I never had anyone harass me like that. I contacted the police and waited, waited for an officer to arrive. By then, unit number C wife came down and in aggressive, attacking manner began to shout at me and walk towards me, yelling profanities and telling me she will continue harassing us until we move out, because that's what the landlord wants. She yelled, and I will send my husband... She yelled, "And I will send my husband to your bed tonight. I will stick a pole in your anus." The tenant living in Unit A came out of her apartment and handed a glass of water to Number C Y. She splashed me with water. I called the police. And when Officer Vincent Jackson and Caribbean arrived and explained the problem to them, and I pointed out the posted "No parking sign provided by the city of Glendale" indicated that the visitor was in violation of the parking code. Throughout this time, Unit Number C Y and the illegally parked driver continued to use profanities, threats, and insults against me and my brother. Officer Vincent Jackson told me was that the landlord has to address the problem. I was very disappointed and frustrated by the officer overlooking the problem and a feeling that I was shared by Neighborhood Service Director Sam Engel. After hearing about the incident, Mr. Engel told me the officer response was not right. During a previous conversation with him regarding the insulted situation, Mr. Engel had stated, "Your landlord is not concerned about addressing this problem, and his action encourages other tenants to harass you." On one other occasion, after having talked to my landlord about the problem of the building, Officer John Darby told me that your landlord doesn't like you. She wants you out of that building. You already have, you have already fully acknowledged the tenant harassment and the landlord biased treatment. There has to be only one rule for all tenants. Last year, since I came here, and I had asked for your help in addressing the harassment, insults, and disturbing actions of other tenants against us. Unfortunately, the problem has remained unsolved. That is why I am asking for your help in this evening. Please take in consideration my situation. What is this world? What is the law? Every time when we're coming in city meeting, we're already in the making, flag saluting, "Justice for all of us." What is justice here?
Pauline Pachigian, followed by Mike Mohill.
Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, community members, my name is Pauline Pachakjin, and I am a resident of Glendale, California. As you all may already know, several lampposts situated along Broadway and Brand Boulevard are adorned with symbols closely resembling swastikas, as we can see here. According to Glendale's archives, these lampposts were placed there over 90 years ago, sometime in the 1920s. I understand why some may feel the need to preserve the longevity of such historical structures, but I find the negative aspects these lampposts possess today overpowering its historical significance. Glendale has not always been the multicultural city that we see today. In fact, the population of Glendale was predominantly Caucasian or white American prior to the large influx of immigrants with a great variety of ethnic backgrounds. Unfortunately, this resulted in a considerable amount of white supremacy within the city, leading to groups such as the Ku Klux Klan gaining power and leadership among its residents. Although these lampposts may not have any legitimate ties to the aforementioned group, citizens may assume a connection between the two and view them in a negative light. Additionally, tourists and foreigners passing through the city may be thrown off by the lampposts as the symbol itself is feared and dreaded by many today. Just as the entire nation has transformed from its dark days as a discriminatory environment, our city has also evolved to include a populace with much greater diversity. Today, Glendale houses people from a large array of cultures, including Armenian, Filipino, Hispanic, Korean, and much more. Therefore, I find that it is necessary for the city to acknowledge this transformation and alter these lampposts. The negativity of the lampposts are clear to understand as these swastikas have gone from being a simple design to representing inhumane values in today's world. The swastikas today embody discrimination, racism, intolerance, and ultimately evil. Therefore, it is only appropriate for the city of Glendale to take action in the removal of these swastikas as they are no longer suitable in a diverse area in the 21st century. As a born and raised Glendalean, I expect my city to encourage diversity, not provide symbols of hatred and racism. I can recall as a young student just learning about Nazi Germany and walking past these lampposts in my very own home city and questioning their presence. Also, media attention was brought to these lampposts in 2008 when born and raised Glendale citizen and famed musician Doron Malakian stated that his band, Scars on Broadway, was named after the same symbols on the lamppost that I speak of today. Now, I completely understand that it may not be of the greatest convenience to remove these lampposts when there are much more pressing issues our city faces today. However, there are surely measures that can be taken to diminish the swastikas from these lampposts. The swastikas only cover the base of the posts, and thus can be either covered or chiseled off. From my understanding, this issue has been raised in the past. Though I was unable to obtain the video of the council meeting, I know that a report was submitted to the council on August 17th, 1995, depicting of the lamppost origins and possible solutions to the problem. The report noted that swastikas were a common design, meaning "good fortune", before the Nazis adopted it as their symbol. It also included solutions such as removing the lampposts, covering the symbols, or taking initiative to educate people of their origin. It is my hope that you revisit this issue and as my representatives, take appropriate action in getting them altered or removed. Thank you for your time.
Mike, Mike Mohill, followed by Evelyn Van Orden.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, council members in the viewing audience. My name is Mike Mohill. Councilwoman Friedman, last week you stated social security and city pension benefits should not be compared. You further stated social security, quote, "was never meant to be the pensions or the savings of this nation. It was meant to be something to keep people out of abject poverty." Mrs. Friedman, were the city pensions initially given to city employees supposed to make them become millionaires when they retired? Should a Glendale city employee be entitled to a pension after 30 years, receiving 90%, 75%, or 60% of their last year of spiked earnings? Do social security recipients receive spiked earnings? Many city employees are leaving Glendale with lifetime annual pensions of $70,000, $80,000, $90,000, $100,000, $125,000, $150,000, and more. Were city pensions originally instituted to make city employees millionaires? Councilwoman Friedman, you and your colleagues continue to receive thousands of dollars in PAC monies, political action money, legally from the city unions, and then you approve salaries and pensions that are both unfunded and unsustainable. In order to feed these enormous pensions, you and your colleagues have raised our water rates in order to transfer millions of dollars to the GWP into the pockets of our city workers. Now you even want to increase our electric rates in order to transfer more money into the pockets of our city employees. Is that fair, Mrs. Friedman? Let me remind the public that the first obligation of all government at all levels is to find the money to pay for those unsustainable pensions. What money is left over goes towards the roads, the parks, and what is else. How do you tell the people on fixed income, Mrs. Friedman, families who are struggling, that you find it justifiable to keep supporting city employees first? Because you feel that social security and a government pension should not be compared. Oh, and let us not forget the merchants who keep seeing their utility bills rise and other taxes and fees with the rest of us. Is that fair, Mrs. Friedman? Councilman Najarian, last week you said in part, "Now, is Mr. Mohill against the First Amendment?" I think he is. You said also, "Mohill is against free speech and the Constitution." He's against the Bill of Rights. Can you imagine on the eve of the Fourth of July, the most sacred holiday for freedom in this country? You said, "Mr. Mohill, stand before us with a straight face, ladies and gentlemen, and puts down the Constitution that makes this country so great." Councilman Najarian and council members, approximately 47 years ago, right out of college, I volunteered to join the US Army, where I also served time in Vietnam, defending your rights to criticize me every Tuesday night. I never attacked free speech of the PACs or your right of free speech. However, I strongly attack you for being influenced by these PACs when you receive money from them and then you vote for their monstrous salaries and pensions, sir. Councilman Najarian, to accuse me of not knowing and understanding the First Amendment, the Bill of Rights, and the US Constitution is insulting to me and to all the veterans in these United States. Mr. Najarian, what have you done for your country? I know what I've done for my country. Vietnam, sir, was a combat zone, and I risked my life, Mr. Najarian, for you to have the right of free speech. Do not imply that I do not know the First Amendment, the Bill, and the Bill of Rights, and the US Constitution. Mr. Najarian, this is one of the medals that I received when I left the service of the United States. I've never put it on my military uniform. However, Mr. Najarian, here is my uniform that you say you don't believe, that I believe in free speech for everybody. I defended your rights, sir, 47 years ago, the First Amendment.
Evelyn Van Orden, followed by Harry Zavos. Evelyn Van Orden. Okay, Harry Zavos, followed by Tony Passarella.
Council, my name is Harry Zavos, and I'm here on this item representing myself. At noon tomorrow at the police building, the city begins its public outreach regarding a prospective electric rate increase. I've made the case that under Article 13C of the state constitution, as amended by Proposition 26, any such increase requires a vote of the people to be valid. I've been told by the city attorney, we've been told that the city attorney has prepared a legal memorandum on this issue as yet not made available to the public. Tonight, I want everyone to know, using the language of the Constitution, the case the memo must address.
I'll advance it, Professor.
Section 2D of Article 13C states, "No local government may impose, extend, or increase any special tax until that tax is submitted to the electorate and approved by a two-thirds vote."
It's okay, I'll...
Under Section D, a special tax, as opposed to a general tax, is one that is imposed for a specific purpose. Thus, if the electrical fee or charge is a tax, it would be a special tax.
Harry, I'll...
Okay, thank you. But what is the meaning of tax within the meaning of Article 13C? Well, Section 1E answers that question. A tax means any levy, charge, or extraction of any kind imposed by local government, except. It then goes on to list seven exceptions. Only the second one can remotely apply to the electrical fee or charge. For it to apply, three requirements must be met. First, it must be a charge imposed for a specific governmental service or product provided directly to the payer. A proposed electric fee meets this first requirement to be exempted from a vote of the people. Next slide. Under the second requirement, the product or service must be one that is provided to those not, that is not provided to those not charged. There's a rub. Electrical service cannot meet this second requirement. For unlike ratepayers who pay for electricity to illuminate their homes and businesses, electricity is provided without any fee paid to the utility to illuminate Glendale's street and traffic lights that serve the general public. Next slide. But even if that were not so, the third requirement can't be met. It provides that the charge must, and again I quote, "not exceed the reasonable cost of providing a service or product." The fact that $21 million of electrical fees by way of transfer are used to provide general services instead of providing electricity demonstrates that the increased fees are not reasonably necessary to provide electrical service. If that $21 million were used to provide electricity, it would obviate any need for a rate increase. Where are the slides, are they?
This is the last slide, actually, on this. Doesn't look like there's anything else.
All right, so could we just finish with the slides?
Go ahead.
That's the case to which the city attorney's memo must respond. And let's be clear. Article 13C does not prevent a rate increase. It merely ensures that you, the public, through your vote, will have a say in any rate increase when electrical fees are not exclusively devoted to providing electrical service to the ratepayers. Finally, last week, the trial court decision in the Reading case was mentioned. That case sheds no light on our prospective vote increase. In that case, may I just finish?
Yeah, please finish, because...
Just, just one sentence. In that case, the trial court decided that Proposition 26 did not apply because the utility rate was approved prior to the effective date of Proposition 26, prior to November 3rd, 2010. In our case, the rate change is clearly after November 3rd, 2010. Thank you, Mayor.
Tony Passarella, followed by Herbert Molano. I'll see Passarella in the audience, Herbert Molano, followed by Charles Hooker.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Molano. I think that today is one of those special days when I am able to appreciate the level of discourse, the level of debate, the overall consideration of the voters that you presented during the road diet issue and then on the Rossmoyn Historical District part. I think it's an example of how government should work all the time. And I congratulate you for that level of consideration. That process included, at least on the road diet, outreach to the community, community involvement, and all of the things that many of us here who come before you have been asking for when it comes to issues about the budget and issues about taxation or fee increases. The issues that Professor Harry Zavos brought before you, by the way, he's a professor of law for anyone who doesn't know, is that the city has been in violation for many years... years on various constitutional areas. Proposition 218, that amended Proposition 13, was pretty much ignored since 2006, when the Supreme Court made a ruling. Proposition 26 also deals with regard to the type of charges that can be passed over to the public, and the city has been in violation of that as well since this was passed. But the city has also been in violation of other governmental code, Governmental Code Section 54991, dot one, Part B. It has to do with how the city, the Glendale Water and Power, charges other public entities, for example, the Los Angeles Unified School District, or the Department of Motor Vehicles, and so forth. And there’s a case law in which the Los Angeles Unified School District, along with the State of California and other entities, file suit against the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, because they are not supposed to charge any of the capital facilities fees, just the direct cost of providing that service, meaning the electricity or the water. And the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, instead of going through with the lawsuit, decided to settle. So it doesn’t yet have the weight of a court decision. But yet, you have been overcharging the Los Angeles Unified School District millions of dollars under various different propositions here. And I think that is incredibly unfair, unfair to the children, unfair to those projects that require and they need the type of services for us to school that need to be funded. So in effect, what this city council has done and approved was not just a violation of the Constitution, but also an unfair charge to the Unified School District in creating for them what I believe is millions of dollars in overcharges that prevent the school from providing after-school programs that are required to be able to intercede on behalf of many kids who need it. Now, we have been told by the city attorney and by the city manager that the city is perfectly in its legal right to do so, at least that’s the way I understand it. Of course, the previous city manager and the previous city attorney did so. But just in the event that the city is subject to a lawsuit, and if the city loses, would that advice still hold? In other words, would the city manager and the city attorney be willing to put their jobs on the line on that recommendation to you, the city council? In other words, if the city is sued and you lose based upon the infractions to these particular propositions, any one of these, including the Governmental Code Section 54991, and they’re giving you the advice to go ahead and continue, would these two gentlemen be willing to put their job on the line on the recommendation they’re giving you, such that if the city loses, they resign? If they believe that the city is totally in compliance, then they should stay. So I’ll sit down and wait for your response to see if they’re willing to put their job on the line on this particular opinion. Professor Zavos and other individuals that I’ve contacted in law tell me that the city is in violation. So just in the event that the city is sued due to the continual disregard for the state constitution and this particular Governmental Code section, are these two gentlemen willing to put their job on the line? That’s my question. Thank you very much.
Charles Hooker, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Mayor, city councilman, my name is Charles Hooker, and I would like to state a couple of items regarding the road diet, but this is in regard to it. If we have the bicycle riders paying $50 a year per bicycle pass a test to ride his bicycle on the city streets and the highways and have insurance on his bicycle, just think, a 180-pound person on a 20-pound bicycle can cause a lot of damage to a pedestrian or an automobile or cause a serious accident. The bicyclist should help to pay for maintenance of Glendale city streets and highways. $100 a year minimum is not asking too much, and this is for each city that he rides in. And that’s really not asking too much. If the bicyclist can do these items, I’m sure we can create new roads and highways and share with everybody, like one gentleman said, “Why can’t we all get along?” And another thing I’d like to say, bicyclists should ride in a single file, not in three in a group, and blocking cars and blowing stop signs and causing all kinds of mayhem. Today, Glendale has started a project near Verdugo Road and Glorieta Park, which is causing a major traffic tie-up right there, and we can almost get a kind of a realizing what would happen if one lane is to be cut off on Verdugo Road, just by going up in that area and taking a look at that. What are we going to do when they need an ambulance to go up to Verdugo Hills Hospital and you got some boy on a bicycle blocking and he’s not ready to move over or nothing? This is all very bad business. And another thing I would like to know is why was item number six, oral communications, put at the end of the meeting? And why is it not on the agenda as number six, if it is actually number six? We should really put that back to either number six or give it the new number. And then, one other thing I’d like to say, we need a Section 8 for the Rossmoyn area. Two 50-unit condominiums up in that area, you could put it right near Nibley Park, and that would just have it, so it would blend in with the surrounding homes and everything. But it would be nice to have a Section 8 for that particular area, as well as throughout the city of Glendale. And thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Robert Bunyanian.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the city council, staff, and audience. First off, my name is Margaret Hammond, I’m a resident of Glendale, and of course have many thoughts about many things. One of the main ones right now, and I got a call from Sheila Murray, and that on Saturday, July 14, there’s going to be the dedication of the Chevy Chase Library, which is located near the fire station up on Chevy Chase. And there is going to be a memorial bench for my favorite Irish warrior, Dick Murray, at 3:30 to 4:30, and Sheila will be providing refreshments, the group there, and they would love to have everybody who knew Dick and respected him, and I miss him, come and join in the dedication. Thank you. Then my next one, which is important, of course, I can’t go without, my bulky item pickup, 818-548-3916. There’s mattresses, couches, and whatnot laying around the city on the streets. And the other thing I would like to bring forth, which is this wonderful book, I don’t know, that was printed, I believe through the efforts of the Clean and Beautiful Committee, and that we raised money and so forth over the years, and also the wonderful map, which I don’t happen to have one with me, I’ve given them all away. But what a wonderful book this is, and it lists in the middle page all the homeowners, the boundaries, and so forth, which is a wonderful guide to people coming to Glendale and knowing and having interest in where their homeowners groups are located and so forth. And as I said, the realtor’s donation will be greatly appreciated if we, I think they just have done another update on this book. And I’m going to be handing these books out at a meeting tomorrow night, as a matter of fact, at Grand Central Homeowners Group. A lot of the people there have never seen it or heard of it, and I think it will help to give them some pride in their area, because that area really needs, you know, some uplifting, what with being completely surrounded by commercial. And actually, I have to tell you that Shirley Temple, that good chip lollipop, which was filmed in that area, actually came down Truitt Street, which is still there as it was, except for, as I say, Grand Central Disney having their building there. At any rate, that’s one of the things. My feeling on the road diet is, if it’s going to cost $129,000 to remove, where is the money going to come from? I think there are other projects in the city that should be looked after, rather than having to worry about how you’re going to take it out once it’s in, because it becomes permanent then if you can’t take it out. And my other thing is that I have a niece who recently moved here from New York, although she was born in Toronto, but she was an actress in New York, and she and her husband moved here. They live just over the border on Alameda, on the Burbank side, and they’re trying to get a historic group together, preservation. And when they brought up about how Glendale had this wonderful preservation and so forth commission, they were told by the city of Burbank, “We don’t care what Glendale does. Let them do whatever they want, we’re going to do what we want.” So all I’m saying is, everybody keeps going back, “Well, what is Burbank doing?” So if they say that about our, what we’re doing, that they have no consideration or care, interest in how we do our business. So maybe it’s time we just took care of our own people and not worry about what other cities do. All right, and the one last tip is for your air conditioners. When it overheats, is to shut it off for about a minute and sprinkle it with some water, with a hose or something, and when you turn it back on, the overheating will have, you know, the thermostat or whatever will have dropped, and therefore it won’t burn up on you. That was told me by an air conditioning man. Thank you.
Robert Bunyanian.
Good evening again, councilwoman members. My name is Robert Bunyanian again, and I’m a resident of Glendale, and I’d like to pick on my favorite target, Councilwoman Laura Friedman. And this probably could go to our mayor, too, about their assumption that general, it’s essentially about the assumption that general rise of prices is better for people than having the general rise of prices being lower. And so what I’d like to start from is, and I’d like to connect that to the general housing stock of Glendale. What we see throughout our country, the United States, we see from the Federal Reserve with their work in trying to lower the interest rates for mortgages, their stated goal essentially is to keep house prices up. For some reason, it is assumed that house prices staying up is better than going down. This idea of general prices being up seeps from the federal government all the way to the state government, and all the way to the cities, and all the way to the populace, and the belief gets to be widespread out that if the prices are up for houses, then it must be good for the residents. Now, whether prices are up or down is a wholly subjective matter. It is between a seller and a buyer, and wherever they meet for a price target is where the house sells. Any interference by government that comes to those prices is artificially either raises or drops the prices. In doing so, governments, in the intervention method, favor some portion of people while they do disservice to other portions of people. Now, there is an incentive for cities to keep their housing prices higher. Of course, if the housing prices are higher, the tax of property taxes are also higher, that gives more dollars for councilmembers to spend on numerous things, which also, if you spend on numerous things, then it essentially incentivizes for people to vote for existing councilmembers. So there is, and this is not an intentional thing, but it’s an inherent economic incentive for councilmembers and essentially all government members to try to keep prices higher than what the natural market would make the prices be. So my question to Councilwoman Friedman is, why are prices higher a good thing? In fact, why are lower prices a good thing? In fact, why are prices that are stable and don’t change a good thing? Why should it be an edict of government to interfere in the price mechanism of any commodity, especially something as houses in Glendale? And what we see in Glendale especially, and this applies to almost every city there is in California, is that the cities themselves restrict a lot of the supply of the housing, whether it is because they put on zoning laws, or whether if it’s a lot of subsidized housing, or means of that nature. What ends up happening is you keep prices artificially higher than they have to be. This puts a lot of strain on individuals who are trying to live, because there are mostly the cost, the highest cost of living that most people have is for their housing, is because of their shelter. So in restricting supply of housing, and Glendale has a very big history of doing so, you do nothing but make the lives of individual residents much more expensive than it has to be. And one other thing that always occurs in Glendale is that since most of the lower-cost housing is essentially taken out, you get to have a lot of luxury condominiums being built. Again, this prices out a lot of people, and a lot of people get to have a lot more stressful life and a lot more expensive life than they would have to if prices were left to adjust as the market would dictate. Thank you.
Hey, any comments? Ms. Menuchin.
I want to thank for all the, everyone, for all the oral communication. The thing that stands out in my mind is the young lady that came up and spoke about swastikas on the light bulbs. I’ve been trying to get those removed since 1999, when I got first elected, and last time I raised the issue, I was told that it would cost $100,000 to grind those down, and we didn’t have the money. That was back in, I don’t know, 2004, 2005. We didn’t have the money, we didn’t want to spend the money back then to, if I’m not mistaken, that’s when it was, to remove those swastikas. But what happened, over the number of years, instead of decreasing those light posts with those symbols on it, we increased it. I voted for replacing the lights on Honolulu a number of years ago. Again, I think it was 2005 and 2006, and I made a point to comment on the die, saying that whatever you do, don’t put up those light posts with those symbols on it anymore anywhere in the city, not just on Honolulu. But to my complete surprise, I found out a couple of years later, after I lost in 2007, that those light posts were replaced with the same exact light posts that were throughout the downtown Glendale. That was a complete shock to me, and I could not understand why staff would go against a recommendation by a councilmember to put those light posts there. I’m willing, at this point, to initiate any kind of program that starts eliminating these light posts. I know there are many designs at that point, they showed me all the different designs that they have for those light posts. I think what we should do, as these light posts get replaced, we should replace them with different kinds of designs, circles, squares, or whatever, but anything other than those. If there are any councilmembers who are willing to hear this item on the agenda, I’m willing to put it there, but I think it’s high time that we deal with these issues and stop putting this story out there that it was, I understand back in the 1930s and 20s that’s what it was, but it’s not anymore. And people who come to Glendale, look at those signs, whether we have it on our website, we have it, we’re proclaiming it with loudspeakers on the streets, that these are not swastikas, but people come to Glendale, look at those signs and giggle and say, “Look, look, this is what Glendale is all about,” and it’s... And it's, I think it's about time we changed that, regardless of what, what the reality is of what those signs represent. Those signs today represent something different than what they were intended for, and it's time that this council and this city starts adapting since the 1940s to new things and changes in the city. The city has changed, and I think it's time to change those light posts.
Well, we went through this issue in the past. There's a documentary that was put out by Scott Howard, et cetera. You know, I don't know why we want to reopen it, in my opinion, I just don't. It's a symbol that's 1,000 years old, so, I don't know, whatever.
I wasn't going to address the swastika issue, but I salute Mr. Mohill for his service to this country. I was impressed with his medal. I don't know what it was for, whether it was for valor. I hope it wasn't for marksmanship. He had me a little scared pulling out that military gear out of the bag, I got to, I don't think I was the only one in the room that thought about that. But my problem is, even though he fought for this country and fought for freedom, it's still ironic that he is complaining and he's challenging the right, which has been determined by the Supreme Court under the Citizens United case, for the political action committees on their own to spend money independently of a candidate, and that's what's happening. They are not giving the candidates thousands and thousands of dollars. That's where he's wrong. He knows he's wrong, but it doesn't sound very good if he spells it out the way it actually is. The unions are limited to $1,000 to donate directly to any particular member, the same as any of the members of the Rossmoyn group that were here before us, or any of the bicyclists or the folks in Whiting Woods discussing their issue. However, the Supreme Court has said, as an exercise of the First Amendment right to free speech, those political action committees may spend the money as they deem fit, independent of the candidate. Let's get that out there. I don't want him to bring that up again and confuse the issue. As far as Mr. Zavos goes, and I raised this several weeks ago, and he hasn't answered me, and I really want him to answer, Slide 6 out of 7 indicates and asserts, his assertion is that we are providing an electrical service, electric service, to the public merely by lighting a street. Now, that's me saying that I'm providing my steak dinner to my neighbor because he can smell my fumes across the way. It's not the same thing. It's one step removed. Any member of the public can't go to one of those light posts and plug in their, their iPad or plug in their electric drill and start to use it. So, but I challenge you to address that issue because I think that's a flaw, not, well, this is a continuing drama, we don't want to end it too soon in the season now, we've got to put it forth as a serial presentation. But I'd like to, to address that because I don't see us providing a service to those that have not paid for the service, as he says in Slide 6. So perhaps we can discuss that next time, and that's all I have.
I'll just say one thing about the swastikas. As far as I can see, they're not swastikas, they're reversed. What it is, though, is a symbol for temples in Asia, so if we're really going to be diverse and say we're respecting all cultures, to people who are Asian in the community, when they look at that, they see a symbol for temple or for peace. So I'm not interested in revisiting the idea of tearing down our historic street signs for something that's not even a swastika. That was built 10 years before Nazi Germany.
It's also a symbol of Native Americans, symbol all over the world, actually, but those two groups have a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Second. Second for the adjourn?
Second by Mr. Weaver.